Let's call the meeting to order, please. Calling to order the council meeting for, uh, council meeting for Thursday, March third, two thousand twenty-two, sorry. Two thousand twenty-two, and would you call it?
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Tanapo?
Here.
Councilman Backer?
Here.
Councilman Eagle?
Yep.
Councilman Peters?
Here.
Councilman Petty?
He's here.
He's here, but absent.
Okay.
Rest in peace.
He's coming.
Vice Harry?
Here.
City Attorney Mullins?
Here.
Okay, there he is.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have the minutes, has everybody had a chance to read the minutes from Thursday, February third, and special call meeting? If someone's out here motion to?
Well, there was one question I had on the minutes, I know.
Um, I think so.
But I, I, I still think that, that last meeting, we agreed to bid out the tornado sirens as the specs that were.
Yes.
They were not bid out that way. So. That's an issue.
But that's not how the motion was made.
The one?
It was discussed, yes, it was discussed. I listened to it today three times. Originally, you'd asked to table it and bring Anthony Taylor in, and it was mentioned to bid it out. When mayor repeated it, it was in discussion, and then you agreed, so that's how I put it.
I think.
But it, I mean, it's understood, if you listen to it, it's understood exactly what he's saying, but that was not.
That it should have been bid out.
Yes, that is understood.
Okay, it's just.
How was it bid out?
Again, if I may address that, I think we, during the meeting, uh, because I've been in touch with the EMA director down in Wilson County for all of theirs, and I said, how would we bid this so everybody can actually bid on it and not have just a specification for only one company to bid? And that's what he gave us as a suggestion, to make it generic, uh, that one specification, there was no other company that could have bid on that around here. Uh, that's one thing the EMA director also highly recommended, and he created those questions for the companies, is that it needs to be a two-hour, uh, two-hour turnaround time, if there is, anything goes down in that, they need to be able to come out and fix it within two hours. So that was one question that he said specifically ask that. So that was on there, and I don't know, I think there was only one that responded that could do it two-hour turnaround if there was a situation. For instance, if it went down, it would be a no value because it wouldn't be working. So, yes, sir.
My, my recollection was, um, that the specifications that were given us were the generic, like FEMA specifications.
FEMA specifications.
And, and I, and again, I'm just trying to say this from a neutral standpoint, that was what I did remember, we specifically wanted a bid out on those specifications.
And I did actually send those to this EMA director, and I said, is, is this generic enough that anyone could bid on it? And he said, no, it's not, because there's specific things in there to one company only.
But why weren't, why wasn't that sent to the companies? Like those, those specifications were supposed to be sent to the companies, not the EMA?
They did, and, and I had a response from one company, well, we can't, we don't even carry that brand. So it was one particular brand, Wayland, what was it, something?
It was a wheel and siren, but it does not that particular brand. We wanted a solar-powered, battery-backed-up thing, and you bid an electromechanical system, totally different.
We, we had three different people who, who I think are gonna be here tonight to speak to that, so maybe they can explain better technically than I can, because we, we did get three proposals, and they were all pretty good proposals.
Does that count, does that count the ones that came to the last meeting?
That, that does count, that's, that's a third or a fourth.
Yeah.
If you look at the bids we're comparing.
I get it, but I'm just saying, I'm saying, third, we have three or four options counted.
Got three, yes.
Yeah.
That's fine.
He, uh.
I just wanted to say it wasn't bid out correctly.
Yeah, we had three responses, uh, one of them didn't have contract, contractors licensed in Tennessee. One was from Alabama, one was Kentucky, one was from Nashville.
No, one was from Michigan.
Not bad. I think there, is everyone here tonight responding? I don't even know who's here.
That's reaching.
Well, anyway, that's, that's, that's how this EMA director, who has a gillion down in Wilson County, said, if you bid it out this way, um, you won't have video, many people will.
But just for the record, that was not what we suggested that you did.
So, that's what I'm confused.
And it was understood, that's what I'm saying.
I'm, I'm confused by that.
Okay.
So Steve, you want to amend, you wanna amend the minutes?
My minutes are correct.
She's saying the minutes are correct now, I, I remember it differently, and I think.
We had three.
Though then I'd say we just go move forward, over the minutes, we'll come back to it.
Yeah.
Let's go on.
Motion approved.
Yeah.
Say it.
Three people, okay, all, any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll let you move into the recording.
I believe you, I believe you are damn right, I'm just saying.
No, it, but it was understood, it was clear.
I just wonder why it wasn't bid out.
I can't imagine.
Okay, the next is consideration, and we don't have any bills over ten thousand, so we go to, are there any citizens' concerns tonight, anyone here who'd like to address anything of that nature? If not, then we'll go into the mayor's report, it's very quick, uh, I just want to say again, we're gonna have a market test on Saturday, April ninth, from ten to four P.M. It's a city walking track, we'll have the vendors and food trucks and music, like we did last year, there will be a dog show again, which will be a lot of fun.
I'm sorry, what was that date?
It's Saturday, April ninth, and ten to four this year, instead of, of nine to three, it's ten to four. And we're adding a new thing that I think will be a lot of fun this year, it's a classic car cruise-in. We have two gentlemen from, well, actually, they live in Hartswell, but they, they put these things together all over the place, and they volunteered to come and help us put it together for the committee that's doing this, so that will be from two P.M. to dusk. So if you know anyone who has classic cars, it's a great time, they just cruise in, it's not a show where they get awards, they cruise in, they look at each other's car, have their little time, but whatever they talk about when they do these, and it's, uh, it will draw more people into the park area, which is one reason we're doing this, to make sure our park is being, and by the way, the walking track is being used a lot in the dog park too, so we all did a good thing in doing that, yes, sir.
Uh, can you provide us with a list of people that's on that committee?
Sure, yeah.
Our best committee?
Not at the top of my head, let me wait for a minute. Okay, can you get?
Just email it to us.
Just email it to us when you get it.
Yeah, yeah.
Kerry is the chair.
Sure.
Uh, Melissa Gibbs, Valerie Upchurch.
I'm not gonna remember these, just to be honest.
I'm not gonna remember.
Yeah, just, just email it, it'd be better.
I will, I will do that.
All righty.
Of course, the other big event is our, uh, new ladder truck, I'm gonna let Chief Pike talk about that during here, that's, that's a wonderful, wonderful new thing. That's all my report, this, is it changed, do you have anything?
Uh, as I was telling, talking to Mr. Eagles and the mayor, tonight is my little girl's birthday, and I'm, I promise you, I'm not gonna miss my little girl's birthday, she's turned six once, so I, I, I have to cut out at six-thirty because it's her birthday, and I don't think she'll understand if I'm not there, so, um, so I'm kinda gonna jump, jump ahead as far as a report, I don't really have much as a report, other than what we've done, what you asked me to do. One of the things that's, I think the major thing that you asked me to do is find an attorney who would be willing to help with the employment benefits ordinance draft. Um, I, I've spoken to Mr. Holyfield, who's here tonight, I told him that I'm not, I think we've preliminarily discussed, or you guys have discussed what you want, I don't, I've heard different things, you know, start at this age, or start at that age, or start at this years, or start at that years, and how it all works, I know we don't really know tonight, the first leg of this journey, I think, for you guys is to find an attorney, because that was harder than I thought it was going to be, but we did find someone who deals in this area of law, and that is Mr. Holyfield, um, he comes highly recommended from other peers and other attorneys in the state of Tennessee that actually draft, um, laws for, or draft ordinances for M-TAS, that's actually how I found Mr. Holyfield. So, um, I'll let him explain, um, at this time, kind of what he does and what he would be willing to do, and I think that'd be the most financially prudent thing, if you decide to go forward with him, to get him in and get him out.
May I have a motion to kind of change order a bit, so we can go ahead?
Motion to move the guest HR attorney employee benefits ordinance discussion to.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed?
Maybe you could just make my business, um, so I could discuss what's on there pertaining to me.
To include, to include the city attorney.
The city, uh, numbers one, two, and three are all this.
Yeah, we'll just include all that in there.
Yeah, okay.
Then we can get you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
All in favor? If someone needs a second of that.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, y'all, I mean, I can sit here, stand up, whatever y'all want.
Whatever you're comfortable in there.
Okay. Uh, so, Will, I'm Al, by the way, it's not Mr. Old Bill, I'm not that old, um, yet, and this is Stephanie, who's apparently what keeps every, keeps me out of trouble, uh, been doing employee benefits for about thirty years, starting to figure out what it's about. Uh, we represent some of the Knights County Charter, so we've done amendments like this before. And so, we've relegated these things around the country, all the way up to the U.S. Supreme Court, and this, we're a boutique firm, and this is what we do, we just happen to be a noxer. And so, uh, I think, who referred you to me, you got through, uh?
Jeff Jones.
Jeff Jones, okay. Wimberly?
Yes.
Okay, that's, we do their stuff on this side of work, and so, if you need more about the firm, it's Holyfield Law, y'all can go read up on us, but we actually write books on this stuff, we actually teach the class at UT Law School on this stuff, so, um, but I understand what y'all wanna do, so I, really, I would like just to hear what's, what your plan is, I know you're trying to do a retiree health plan.
Right.
And I know you got questions about when you started, how you started, and is the self-insure plan, and that's so far and so, start asking questions.
Basically, what it is, we set it out, and we're gonna do twenty-five years, fifty percent, thirty years, a hundred percent paid, we capped it at thirty thousand dollars a year, we would not go over thirty thousand dollars a year, that's the limit. And.
Okay.
And it stops at age sixty-five.
Is it sixty-five, or is it Medicare eligible? Because some people.
We, we discussed Medicare eligibility.
So it's, the age is going up, is the reason I ask, it's gonna be sixty-seven?
Okay, let's use, let's use Medicare eligibility, see, that's a good one.
And so, and so, I mean, just, and so you're gonna cap it at your expenditure?
At thirty thousand.
Any copays from employees?
No.
So if I work here twenty-five years, I get fifty percent of my.
Insurance pays, they pay the other fifty percent.
And when does that start, age what?
At once you reach your twenty-five, say, once you reach your twenty-five years.
So theoretically, I'm a child prodigy, I start working here at eighteen, twenty-five years, I'm forty-three years old, you're gonna pay me till I'm sixty-seven on the health insurance.
We were talking about, we were talking about starting at, um, was we said fifty-five? Let's say fifty-seven and a half.
There's what?
Yeah.
I would recommend you have a starting age, that, that at age fifty-five, and you gotta drive something, there, there's two aspects, y'all gotta agree on what you do, we gotta go to your health insurance company, make sure they buy into what.
Which is the state health, we use the state health insurance.
Okay, they'll know, they're easy to negotiate.
Yeah.
Okay, do that piece, and then. Go there, baby, age fifty-five to retirement age, and all you'd have to do is just strap the charter for that provision, and I'm sure you can send me what, is there any benefits in the charter now?
We have a draft ordinance that specifies what everybody wants, with the exception of ours, the draft says age fifty-five.
To sixty-five.
To Medicare-eligible age.
Is there?
Social Security.
Right.
But I think Medicare is still.
Are there current copays? Like currently, the employees have a copay?
Employee, say, I'll take care of a hundred percent of employees.
How about family coverage, if I retire at forty-three, just employee only?
Just employee only.
Okay.
There's no copays for employees currently?
No, they pay, the city pays a hundred percent. I don't know what the plan covers, but they.
We wanna match exactly what they're doing.
Yeah, they want the exact same thing.
They wanna make sure it's.
Yeah.
Exact same what they're doing, it's just during that ten-year window.
Do y'all have different levels of plan they can buy into with the state, or y'all just, uh, just?
That does the ball, sir.
We have two of our thirty-one employees that use a higher plan than the regular.
So you're gonna let them buy the existing plan, or a lower if they choose, but can you buy up when I retire? Can I go the other way?
It's a big question.
I would say we, we put in there something that you can buy up, but you'll pay the difference for the lower plan.
Or what they have when they retire.
Yeah, you can, the exact same thing when you retire, we'll do that, and if you wanna upgrade it, you have to pay the difference.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody agree with that?
That makes sense.
Okay.
So the major question we had was, could we say this will be for whoever's retired when they get age fifty-five till they're Medicare-eligible, uh, and then, could we do that? Make that statement, um, is the big thing, and then the other was, if we budget just thirty thousand dollars a year, okay, that's the max, if we had one employee that meets the criteria, uh, then we will pay whatever their, their health insurance is, if they met thirty years, twenty-five, we'd pay fifty percent of it, the money that we don't spend, we're not, I mean, it stays there, so, but if we had, let's say, actuarially, we're not gonna have anybody for fifteen years, it would be more than four or five people, but once we reach that point, um, is there a problem with us putting a cap of thirty thousand dollars on our, how much we're gonna obligate?
No, let me ask you this, if that's your cap, that's how an employee, and I'm one year away from Medicare, and my, you know, just because the healthcare goes up and it goes crazy, and my cost now is thirty-one thousand, can I pay the difference of a thousand still be on the plan, or you gonna kick me off?
Can we put something like on a, on a case-by-case basis that we would adjust it?
I don't like the case-by-case basis, because then that gets into politics.
Okay, so let's.
I know you're politically good for it.
Here's the thing, if they retire at twenty-five, and we're paying fifty percent by our draft ordinance, they're already gonna pay their fifty percent for the rest of the fifty percent. We're actually just going to reimburse them after they pay the full premium, or it comes out of their TCRS retirement, and then we would reimburse them.
And so your max reimbursement, I would just, 'cause I would think you'd want to say, we're not gonna kick you off the plan, there's more than that, we're just, we're reimbursing it that way.
Yeah, we, we don't wanna kick anybody off, no.
Right, if they pay the difference, then.
Yes.
And that limit could be raised.
And we can make a budget, and then, and then move it up.
Okay.
The thirty thousand is for the cumulative amount of the employees, though, right?
If there's ten employees, they split the thirty.
Per person.
No.
Thirty thousand.
Okay, there's, because I've seen, I've got some people on my health plan that cost close to thirty thousand a year.
Yeah, no, we, the, the councilists want, our total budget amount would be thirty thousand for that year.
Which means we'd have to reduce the percentage.
If there's ten people, then the percentage goes down, just stuff like that, but we'll, like Scott said, we've got, next fifteen years, we won't have, what, four or five?
So that's gonna be pro rata, diddy-dah. And so there's gonna be a good fifty percent reimbursement for that, there's gonna be a good ten hundred percent, and each year, somebody's gonna have to look at that budget number, right?
Yeah.
But that's where you.
You're not gonna be friends, I got this.
Thing is.
Is that why this chair was open?
We know that we, small town, we can't encumber the town for.
Right.
Way some municipalities have, we know we can't do that, but they want to do something, so that's why they came up with the idea of, let's cap our total cash expenditure to thirty thousand.
Okay.
Now, we know from a very, from a non-actuarial study, you know, I know how many people are gonna retire in the next fifteen years, or have the potential to.
Right.
The only way we know for certain is to have an actuarial study that lays it out.
And we discussed doing one, but we just haven't voted on actually doing it.
This was the first step to.
Yeah, this is what we were wanting to.
Actuarial studies, I mean, okay, first of all, the difference between an introverted and an extroverted actuary, you need to understand this, introverted actuary looks at his shoes, extroverted looks at your shoes, and if you had to go deal with them in the meeting, I know your budget cutoff is nine-nine-nine-nine, and it's gotta go to approval, to go get somebody to do a study on it, you may spend more than that with an actuary. I'm just, just so you know.
I think Scott's addressed that in previous meetings, that.
Yeah.
It, those aren't cheap. And if you wanted to, you can look at your employee history, and you can wag it pretty closely, I, I'm said, I'm just saying, I would not put my money there on this.
That's what I was gonna ask, do you recommend that, especially since we have the cap, you know, if we weren't gonna have cap.
If you got the cap to protect you, you can look at this, and you can always, I mean, my recommendations is always, I always tell people, if you're gonna get into something, I want to know your exit strategy, how you get out. I was telling him about a case that was relegated in, in Nashville, that's, there's a group that's got permanent life, you know, retiree health insurance from now on, and so this program would have to be created, and it would say, we have the right to amend, modify, terminate this plan at any time.
We want that in there, because we just want, we, we wanna take care of our employees, but we understand that bureaucracy can sometimes run away.
Well, my management can run away, healthcare costs.
Yeah.
And we've got a statement in the draft ordinance that says that the town reserves the right to terminate this if it's determined in the best interest of the citizens.
We've got Mr. Holyfield here tonight, I wanna take, we're taking up a whole long time, I, remember one thing, he likes to get paid, I'm sure, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Before we start delving into this, I know, uh, a lot of times attorneys get asked a lot of questions, and then people say, oh, well, see you, bye, thanks, I've got a lot of advice, uh, so I think, based upon my conversations, I don't know if it's changed since you've talked, since Mr. Holyfield's talked to you, I think he's willing to help you guys, I think, if I'm wrong, I think you guys agreed to go up to the nine, nine thousand, nine hundred, nine ninety dollars for.
We voted, we voted on that last time, yes.
For the attorney's fees, I think, my conversation with Mr. Holyfield.
We can make that work.
He did, he can make that work, your total, you said your hourly fee would be?
Uh, yeah, I'm not, we'll go three-fifty an hour for me, which is lower than my normal fee, uh, and we'll do two-seventy-five for associates and one-fifty for the paralegal. And so, I don't see this taking a lot of time, I mean, once we get it drafted, then y'all want to take it through the political process, and then we just have to watch it from time to time, you may be calling down the road to say, hey, what changed, or how's this working, or what's blowing up.
Would it be conceivable that we could send you our draft?
Absolutely.
Use that as the template?
Absolutely, I'm, listen, plagiarism is the highest form of flak.
I'm not asking for that.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we hire attorney Mo, Holyfield, to take on this matter for the city of Carthage.
Second. Motion second, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. I would be glad to proceed with this.
Just for clarification, if I can get what he's drafted, and we'll probably have a conversation just to make sure, and probably have, have one more meeting with y'all, just to discuss through it, make sure everybody's on the same page.
Yeah, whatever.
And not pick it apart, 'cause I mean, you have to really think about what could go wrong.
I'm just saying, that's what I've been doing, I've been thinking about what could go wrong, and that's where it went way above my training.
And no one ever comes to me and says, my day's good, life is great, bill me for this. He usually says, something happened, and we gotta go fix it.
Yeah. I think that you'll probably be working mostly with Scott on that, because he's the numbers guy, so.
Okay.
The mayor.
Thank, thank you very much, we appreciate you coming here.
Oh, thank you, you're welcome.
You're, you're welcome to stay, or do you prefer to?
No, I don't want to interrupt y'all's business.
I'm gonna leave some of his cards here for anybody who would like to have one. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank y'all for taking time to come in.
Thank you, you guys have a safe trip.
Have a great birthday.
Thank you.
Just so you know, Stacy was not there tonight.
And you missed the turnip greens.
Oh, darn, so, thank you.
Feather's permit ordered.
We're going to go to the next, uh, feather's permit, and.
Says example on the side of it, I don't know why that example thing came out in a photo.
We're just here to prove the second reading, right?
It's the first reading.
It's the second reading.
It's the second.
We did the last one.
He did it in the, he did it not in between, in the special hall.
Okay, second reading, uh, do I hear a motion to accept this?
Motion to approve, second reading, CO two-zero-two-two-two, two-zero-two-two-zero-two-zero-three. Second.
We have a motion, second, any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And attorney, do you have any update on that tax assessor?
Yeah, I, the tax assessor, I sent Charles' proposal to, um, Jeremiah Hassler, who's Smith County's attorney, I think the question you have was, is how does the tax assessor come up with the calculations for how much it's going to cost to do the new appraisal? Uh, as you all know, I'm coming in on the backend of all this, a lot of it went on with your previous attorney, I guess Mr. Hassler respond, Mr. Hassler responded to me on February twenty-fourth and said that he had had a meeting in April of, I'm guessing that would have been last year, because it didn't involve me, with the three mayors and Mr. Collins, I, I guess, is that the tax assessor?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and where, that, the calculation was explained in that meeting, what was said, I have no earthly idea, um, they, he went on to say that, uh, tentative agreements were made with Gordonsville and South Carthage, about the calculations, and the one exception that they agreed to reduce the city share from fifty percent to twenty-five percent, and it's explained in the letter, so I guess that's where they're coming up with, I guess that's what they agreed to do with Gordonsville and South Carthage, so they're extending that offer to you guys, he never went on to say that you guys can lock in that rate for longer than the, the, what was it, three years, I think is what he proposed, so, I, my opinion is, based upon the reading of the ordinance, they have the right to charge you this, I mean, I guess you can sit around and pound the pavement about it, be mad about it, but you're gonna have to call Terry Lynn Weaver and have her change the statute, I, I don't know how to get around, maybe, and I understand that maybe in the past, it's not been charged, maybe other counties overlook it, I don't, obviously, I'm from Overton County, I don't know if Overton County does this, I haven't heard it, but.
But we owe it.
For some reason.
It's at his, it's at his discretion.
For some reason, your county's deciding to do that, and.
I'm making a motion, we pay it.
We, we made a motion to pay it last time, we need to make a motion to accept the agreement for at least three years.
Yeah.
That's what I was, that's what I was doing.
I don't think it's been invoiced in that way, you said.
So they haven't sent us an invoice?
Maybe if you get a new, um, just, you know, tax assessor, I mean, maybe that changes, I, I.
Could go up.
Just to clarify, we, we are gonna pay the initial, but I think we're just talking about that going forward for the three years.
We need to lock it in.
Locking it in.
We need to lock it in, need to lock it in.
Did they say we can do that?
Yes, yeah, that was their offer.
Oh, okay. That was their offer for three years. I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
But now, we're, I, I, there's no legality that I can see that you can say, we did it for these three years, so we're gonna do it from a fifty and beyond. If he wants to charge you fifty percent, he's gonna charge you fifty percent. Now, I guess to go back to answer your question that you posed me with, how you determine it, I, that was explained in some other meetings, what I got from Jerem, from Mr. Hassler. So, I guess it was explained and it wasn't too unreasonable to the other people.
And the budget committee meeting with the commissioners other night, the budget committee failed as far as the future. So, it goes before the full commission now for approval, but we didn't pass it, so.
I'm sorry, what?
Didn't pass what?
The future as far as what he's gonna charge.
After three years.
Okay.
Okay. So, nobody knows?
Yeah, nobody knows yet. But it will go before the full commission.
So, we're committing at this point to three years.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that motion on the table, or is that what you were gonna do?
That's why I was motioning. Second.
Okay, so we, we have a motion on the table to.
To accept the offer.
To, could you repeat that again? So, rest clear, what we do? Twenty-five percent.
Yeah, you're gonna pay twenty-five, the offer was, is you pay twenty-five percent of the fifty percent that the statute allows. So, he can charge you fifty percent of whatever the appraisal cost is to determine the appraisal for the city. So, instead of paying fifty percent, you're gonna pay twenty-five percent of the fifty percent, if that makes sense.
It was recommended by the com- budget.
So, we have a motion, second. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I'm gonna go to the birthday party. Thank you, guys.
Be careful, uh, mayor. We recognize our youth leadership.
Yes, I was gonna do that. Before we go back to our regular order, we have two young ladies from the youth leadership. Could you introduce yourselves? And we're so pleased to have you here.
Hi, my name's Kiri, and I go to Smith County High School.
I'm Rebecca, and I go to Smith County High School.
And are you girls sisters?
Uh, yes, ma'am, we're twins.
We're very happy to have you today. Very happy. Thank you. Uh, they came to visit all of us one day, and we were pleased to have them here, too. So, thank you for coming back, for getting your, your points tonight.
Also, I, they may not, if the meeting gets long, they may not have to, they don't have to stay for the entire time.
No, you don't have to stay those long.
Do what you feel like.
Yeah. And we'll sign, if you'll leave your paper, we're gonna sign off. So, thank you. Then we're gonna go back to the regular order. Uh, city recorded, do we make a report?
I just wanted to remind you guys, if you wanted to add on the special permits.
Yeah, I've got, yes, and, I mean, I can do that right now. Um, just, and I figured it's appropriate to add it on new business, but there's two permits on here for the Drug Prove, Drug Prevention Coalition and the American Legion. We can add that. I'd like to motion to add that to new business.
How many, how many you asking for the American Legion?
No, I think it's.
Well, this is just to add it to the.
It's to add it to the agenda.
These are both.
Oh, not to approve it.
The American Legion one is here, too.
We'll discuss it at the end of new business.
I'm sorry, which one is that? Is that for the parade, or?
No, it's for the concert series.
Can you practice that one?
Yeah, yeah.
I've got the two for the Drug Prevention Coalition.
Bill brought these up here today, so I think he's supposed to need to have a little while, so. I'm gonna send two here, right, Bill?
So, are we gonna consider all three? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, and I'm just, I'm just, I'm just motioning to add it to the agenda.
Okay, so a motion to add it to new business in the agenda, go ahead, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we'll add to, we'll have to do it, uh, I guess at the end here.
Second to that, I'm sorry.
Sam.
Okay.
You seconded that, right?
I did.
Thank you, sir.
So, do you have anything else in the report?
I do, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Chief Davis, would you like to report?
Guys, y'all had my monthly reports. Sorry I wasn't able to make it to the last meeting. I'm back now. But if y'all have any questions for me, I'll be ready to answer them at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank y'all.
And, and we do want to say publicly, Les is not with us tonight, and we wish him the best. He has a health situation, and we wish him the best, all of us. So, so Jared, could you maybe fill in for him? Do you have anything from both of your?
He didn't pass anything on to report. Uh, be glad to answer any questions that you have.
And is that for public?
That's for public works, water sewer.
Okay.
I don't have anything new to report. Uh, do have some stuff coming up in new business.
Okay, great.
Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Water Plant, Rusty?
I, I have no official report, but if y'all got any questions, you know, uh, go ahead and ask. But I do wanna make a statement, um, because I may not get a chance to speak later at the meeting. But, uh, I don't know what's going on exactly with Scott's situation with the city right now. But I do wanna go on record as saying that he is a tremendous asset to this city. And he makes my job easier, and I, I venture to say that he makes every supervisor's job easier. So, whatever we've gotta do to fix this situation, we need to fix it tonight.
Absolutely.
This needs to be, when the time is right to talk about it, this needs to be resolved, because we, we need him. We need him.
Well, and I agree with you a hundred percent, and even have asked, they had his cell in the breach site, what is it, up to sixty thousand? So, I think he was, he's worth every, every bit of, very much, so. Okay, um.
Waste water, we're business as usual. If y'all got any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them. And, uh, I'll just say Scott's the man. He's awesome. Uh, he gives us more information than I'd ever think I would get. So, sometimes I think he puts stuff on our sip, I'm even reading it, but he does a great job.
Yes, he does. Y'all do okay during all that water?
What?
All that water coming?
Oh, we had, well, with four point four inches of rain last week, uh, which the I and I study is finishing up. We're supposed to have a meet next week. Uh, two days in a row, we were at one point two million gallon coming through for two days in a row. That's about double capacity. So, we're going in the right direction. That's the thing we gotta realize. We're, we're working on I and I. We'll get there. And, uh, appreciate y'all giving us what we need to try to get it done, because it's, we're, we're taking steps. It's gotta be done. And we're not spending a little money, but we'll eventually get that I and I under control. And then we'll go to work on the plant, see what we do there. So, we appreciate what y'all give us.
Wonderful. And I will throw in that, uh, we want to thank the Corps of Engineers. They allowed the supervisors for the water and sewer and myself to take a tour through their facility, and I've never been there before. It was quite interesting to go through the, the core element of the dam.
Yeah, that was good, because we were able to discuss things they do at the dam that affects what Rusty does at the water plant and what we do at the wastewater plant. And we got a lot of insight on why they do certain things. And then they got to hear what, how it affects us a lot of times that they never realized. So, that and also getting to talk to them, uh, hopefully, the rip route project at the plant's gonna be happening later this year. And, which I've had some discussion with Scott, because it's hard to determine what you think it's gonna cost bringing a barge in and trying to build a riverbank back. But if you compare it to what we spent on Third Avenue, it could be two to three times maybe higher than that. You know, you're looking at quite a bit of things, but, uh, that's just another thing going forward we got going on. So, hopefully, by the end of this year, you're gonna see a lot of improvement.
And, and they're covering all the engineering fees for that, and we only paid thirty-five percent of the construction.
Right, yeah.
So, it's a really great grant that we rewarded.
When we get to our budget part, it's, it's budgeted, no matter what we think it will cost us percentage-wise and stuff. But that's just projects that we got going on, and pretty much at the wastewater plant. And hopefully, by the end of the year, we'll see a lot of difference in some things, you know?
Yeah, that's great.
That's all I got.
Chief Ty, are you part?
You don't have a written report tonight, because when we called, there's bleach. Had January call, had February, 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 three more calls left. We had twelve emergency calls, so it's the only month we've had in, I don't know how many years. Quick report, we did get the new, to us, used ladder truck in. There, there's a couple of small issues, very, very minor. Well, I tapped some equipment for it. We knew all that, and we bought it. I think we'll come in under the hundred seventy-five thousand dollar budget. Uh, new, media plus. So, I'm, I'm happy. Uh, the building, we've got the concrete poured. It's been sealed. The heavy metal's supposed to be here hopefully tomorrow. Uh, they say probably start on the building portion the following week. And we'll take them about three days to erect the heavy metal. And that, I don't know where we'll get overhead doors there on the back order, and like everything else, y'all know how that works. If y'all got any questions, that's, that's my report.
Hey.
Thank y'all.
It's a great engine, too. It goes up to, the ladder goes seventy-five feet.
Seventy-five foot, here you are.
And one of the firemen went up on Sunday. Who was that again?
James, James Craig.
Yeah, all the way out.
You gotta have good legs, you're right.
That's right, that's right.
I'll compliment Scott as well. He helps me with my, with a lot. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. So, do these ladies need to, to leave or?
Yeah, do you want to sign it? You want me to go ahead and sign it?
Uh, do you wanna do it, Chris? Okay, there you go.
It would be under the, yeah, city council, Carthage city council.
Did you ever do leadership? It's a good program.
I don't know.
Yeah, you know, I love to tell me all these.
Thank you, ladies. We really appreciate you standing on here.
You can bring him here. He driving now, ladies. No, he's not yet. He got it first. John did, too.
If you're more than welcome to stay, however you would like to do this. Okay. Uh, next report is CFO Scott, please.
You have a copy of the written report. Uh, I'll kind of summarize a few things, and I'm gonna point out a few pages for your attention. You have the general fund cash, you know, five point four million dollars. That includes around two hundred and thirty-two thousand of the ARP money. Street aid has three hundred and thirty-six thousand, six ninety-five. I point that out, because, uh, as we begin to do the Main Street, the other streets, we're gonna use a big part of that money that comes from gas tax revenues that come in monthly. Water sewer fund has, uh, got three point two million dollars in it at this point, of which we talked a little bit about the plans for the water lines, which the streets will follow with that. The ratios that are there, uh, were still very solid in the general fund. That's despite, uh, we paid for the retaining wall, the Third Avenue, that is, Third Avenue retaining wall. Plus, we bought the fire truck, so those are two big items that come, um, that we have paid out of funds. I call your attention to, uh, page three of the financials, uh, and I just kinda circled right now. It says a two twenty-eight. Uh, we have a surplus that's come in, that's a three seventy-eight, seven fourteen. But that, that's after we've already paid for the fire truck and the retaining wall, uh, that was there. Call your attention to, uh, page ten of the report. Uh, and this is just to kinda show you where it all quickly comes up, that you'll notice I've circled the replacement apparatus. That's Chief Hyatt's, uh, new ladder truck that you've heard about. Uh, if you look at page eleven, uh, I've circled there the Third Avenue embankment project. It's one of those, we normally don't write big checks of that size. And then I call your attention to page twenty-one of the report. This is the water sewer fund. You know, we're looking at forty-four thousand dollar, uh, excess of revenue over expenditures, but that's kinda lower than our past history. And I wanted to point out the reasons for that. Uh, we had an emergency repair on Fifth Avenue, Spring Street. And that was about twenty-six thousand dollars that we, we paid. Uh, and we started making payments on the engineering for the inflow and infiltration project, about fifty thousand dollars. And then, uh, we've also paid engineering fees for a future alley project. Uh, we have submitted those for the state revolving fund loans, uh, but we haven't got any disbursements yet. We can cash flow, pay our bills to people, uh, apart from waiting for whatever time for that to come. We've already talked about the, uh, the cash ratios, and just point out our debt service ratio. We're okay. We, I know it's gonna be on the agenda tonight, talk some about, uh, paying off some debt. And I'll address that if you desire some info on that later. Um, and then you, you can read paragraph four.
Any questions for Scott on that?
Sir, paragraph four, I'm so sorry.
Thank you. Uh, we have the grant in engineering. Mr. Jones wasn't able to be here tonight, so he typed out, uh, a report, I think that's in your packet there. But, uh, basically, just an overview, we had a pre-construction meeting today about the future alley water line. They'll start, it's, clock sucks working. I believe it's Monday on that, uh. Then, uh, it's up to them to get all the construction things in, but it will start the clock on the actual contract section, so it starts on Monday. Uh, the Main Street water line, they're almost complete with the engineering plans for that. Uh, as soon as they finish that, they'll send it to us, and then Derek and some of you will be looking at, well, our, our works, public works guys will be looking at it. Um, they're hoping to be through and get it to T deck to get it approval, so we can start getting it in April. Which if we can get it, that bid that soon and get it done, uh, they, we could still pave, hopefully by the end of the year, pave Main Street. So, we could get all of that accomplished by, hopefully by the end of the year. We're trying to expedite through T deck, making sure that their plans are approved. The Turkey Creek booster station, again, you can read that. It's, it's basically, they're waiting for some of the parts to come in, but that's ready to go, too. And shouldn't take too long once we get the parts in, because it's just a matter of putting it out there. The generator will be coming later for that. Uh, and then the I and I study, um, they were going to meet this week to go over the flow meters. They've already been taken up. They have all the information. Mr. Kurtz has them. He's analyzing it. We're gonna wait till next week to do that, though. So, they'll have a meeting here for Mr. Kurtz, Mr. Jones, uh, the folks who are doing the I and I study, the water meter flow, and they'll all prepare notes. And that would be the first portion of it. And once they do a few more tests, we'll be ready, if we can get the grants in time, to start doing some of our sewer lines also. So, we're still waiting, um, just to keep you updated on that. We've met with Senator Haggerty's office, Congressman Rose's office. Right now, we're officially on a bill they're gonna put through Congress. And it, it's every two years that they will appropriate some money to towns around the country, and only so many in each state. So, we're on, we are on schedule to be in their bill included. There will be other cities in there. But if the money's there to be appropriated, that will help us considerably with this. And we might not get it until the end of the year, but it could help us pay for a lot of our water and sewer lines here. So, cross your fingers on that one. But they're very good and whole, and again, we have to thank the Corps of Engineers, because their connection with our rip route project set us up to also apply for this grant. So, they've been really helpful to our town. And, uh, they are also on board with this to help with some of the legis, writing some of the legalities for legislation. So, that's really good. That's, that's the general report. Uh, as, as Chief told you, we have, um, I think Kevin can be here tonight, but he brought you up to date on what the, is happening with the extensions there on the fire hall. Okay, um, now we go back to unfinished business, and we have item number four, which is the tornado sirens. And we have a guest speaker, and then I think we have two people from the companies here, I, I think, somewhere. Okay. Who's our guest speaker tonight? Yes, could you please tell us your name and just come on out? Okay.
I am Anthony Taylor. I run Upper Cumberland Weather. You may have seen it on Facebook, Twitter. We cover about, uh, over thirty-five thousand followers across the Upper Cumberland region, including Smith County. Been doing that for, well, five years, Upper Cumberland Weather, and started out Smith County Weather, uh, five years before that. And it's ironic, I guess, the day's the two-year anniversary of the March third, twenty, twenty tornado hills that claimed nineteen lives, unfortunately, in Putten County. And now here I am, two years later, speaking on tornado affairs. I guess there's some irony with that. Uh, but I'm not here necessarily to advocate for or against sirens. I just kinda wanna provide, uh, just kind of my own perspective on it. Uh, just things I've learned, research I've done, and, uh, just kinda provide, I guess, uh, an opinion, I guess, from the meteorological, meteorological side of things. Um, and it's an issue I've kinda wavered back and forth on myself, just hearing different stories. Um, honestly, there are probably more cons, uh, torna, to tornado sirens than there are pros, but there are some pros, and we'll get into that here in a second. Uh, but really, a truly no system is fail-proof. Um, you know, this iron system, we'll get into this a little bit, it could fail and not be heard, uh, by a large number of folks. And, uh, also, your apps on your phone or your wireless emergency alerts that everybody's supposed to be able to get, uh, if the cell towers go down, that could fail to activate. Uh, your weather radio, uh, it's very rare that this happens, but a weather radio transmitter could go down. And, uh, now, there are three that cover Smith County, but if one of those goes down, your weather radio doesn't know that necessarily. So, uh, folks may not know which frequency they need to switch to if that happens. So, no system is perfect, but we've really come a long ways, though, with our technology. Um, you know, tornado sirens, these, these things date back to Cold War era, which is kinda ironic that we're now talking about Cold War era stuff again. Hey, uh, with everything going on. Uh, but anyway, uh, but they're only meant for outdoors only, period. Like, these are outdoor-only sirens. Uh, their outdoor reaches may be about a mile, mile and a half, you know, depends on where you're at. Uh, but their indoor reaches vary for, like, maybe if you're next to the siren close to it. And you'll hear people say, oh, I can hear the siren indoors. Well, yes. Uh, maybe on the, the test day once a month, when it's sunny outside, you don't have any inside noise, maybe you'll hear it. But when you have thunder rolling and winds blowing and howling, it's very unlikely you're gonna hear them indoors unless you're just really close to them. And, uh, that leads me into siren mentality. Uh, this idea that that siren will alert you if there's a tornado approaching. And unfortunately, that has claimed lives before. Uh, we saw that on April twenty-seventh, twenty-eleven down in Alabama. There were several folks who died because they thought they would hear a siren that did not go off. The siren didn't go off, or they just didn't hear it altogether. And, uh, you know, that, that's a concern of mine, uh, having grown up in Smith County and being from Carthage, that, you know, we would have that mentality among folks to hear about a siren system going up and then, um, think that that siren's gonna save them if, God forbid, Amayville, Kentucky, like tornado came through and devastated the town. And, uh, I would hate to hear about something like that. But again, we, we established it for outdoor use, um, and, uh, really, I guess, here in Carthage, I guess the question would be, where would they be most effective? You know, most of our tornadoes occur at night, and they occur during what's called, uh, QLCS, quasi-linear convective systems, the big word for it, squall line. Uh, we have several of these come through every year. Uh, we had one a few weeks ago. Uh, the one, the tornado that came through Carthage, uh, December eleventh, was in a QLCS squall line. Tornadoes and those spin. Uh, tornadoes and those spin up very fast. You can't really see them on radar, uh, until they've already formed, a lot of times. And, uh, so when a warning comes out, as was the case in Carthage, uh, the warning may come out after the tornado has already touched down. And, uh, actually, what happened that morning was the tornado touched down one minute before the warning actually came out. So in that case, the siren actually would have been totally ineffective, because the tornado was already past Carthage by the time the warning went out. So, a lot of our tornadoes come without a whole lot of warning. Now, uh, the Weather Service has a great warning process, and that's not to down them, because, uh, they're on top of things. It's just, uh, a limitation of radar technology that we have right now, uh, in, in those particular storm events. Uh, but if I'm looking at Smith County as a whole, you know, I do see maybe a few spots that a siren would be useful. Maybe the truck stop, you have folks coming in from out of town. It may not be weather-aware. Uh, maybe the campgrounds that are defeated, people camping, Linda's cell service, or maybe even somewhere like around Paris, you got ballgames going on and stuff. But, uh, you know, you, tho, in those cases, you're, you can reach folks who are traveling through, uh, who may not be as weather-prepared as we are here. So that, that's a consideration. And, and it goes back to the whole idea of, you know, with sirens, if one or more systems were to fail, and I guess this will be a pro to sirens, it could be there as a backup. Uh, so, you know, I would hope that all residents have multiple ways of receiving alerts. If they have, uh, the wireless emergency alerts, W-E-A alerted on their phone, set up on their phone. Uh, every smartphone should have that these days, and that should be enabled. Uh, I would hope they have an app on their phone. Uh, there are multiple apps, many of them are free, good apps out there. Uh, and also, no weather radio, and I can't advocate for no weather radios enough. But if everybody had that, then the siren wouldn't be necessary. But not everybody has access to those. And, uh, so again, in that case, then maybe a siren could potentially take a lot for two. So, again, that is also something to think about. But I do have, I guess, a few things I want to talk about that could either, uh, maybe complement a siren system, if you were to invest in one, or even just take the place of the idea entirely. Weather radios. So, A-Rab Alabama, I think it was last year, maybe the year before last, they actually decommissioned their tornado siren system. They realized it was outdated technology, and they wanted something better. So, uh, they have invested in weather radios for residents who want one. So any resident who wants one, they go to the fire department and pick one up. And they'll program it and everything for them. Uh, weather radios are pretty cheap. I mean, retail cost for a Midland old weather radio is about thirty dollars. Um, I'm sure you can get them in Bullitt for a lot cheaper than that. But, you know, if you're looking at eight-hundred or so households here in Carthage, with a thirty-dollar cost, probably a lot cheaper than that in Bullitt. I mean, you're looking at, what, maybe twenty thousand dollars or less, maybe? So, something to consider. Um, you can have all your city personnel trained on that, program them. People can come by City Hall, take one up, you know, uh, have batteries on standby, just something to think about. And there could be grant opportunities too, uh, for weather radios. Uh, you know, much more efficient for taxpayers. And, uh, as far as, you know, I don't endorse them or anything, but Midland would probably be the company to look at, to look into. Uh, they're very well-respected in the meteorological community. But again, and, uh, like I said previously, uh, Smith County and Carthage are covered by three different weather radio transmitters. So, it's very unlikely anyone would have a signal issue wherever they're at. One station doesn't pick up, they can switch to the next, and they'll get the alert. Uh, but the next thing is community storm shelters. And, uh, these have been growing in popularity, especially in the Midwest and down Alabama, uh, since April twenty-seven, twenty-eleven. Uh, but they give folks a place to go. Uh, you know, mobile homes are great housing, great affordable housing, nothing all wrong with them, but they're not where you want to be during a tornado. Uh, maybe the second floor of an apartment, you know, just residents who don't really have a safe place to go. And I even thought about, uh, you know, you have a lot of people moving in who aren't from this area. Maybe they don't have connections, people, they can, uh, go to their house if there's severe weather. They don't have anywhere they can go. If you had a community storm shelter, they would have a place they could go. Maybe they can ride out the storm there before any warnings are issued, or, you know, however you want to handle that. And I don't know what the cost of that would be, uh, but maybe you could work with the county on that, uh, explore grant opportunities, maybe work with FEMA somehow. Uh, but I would love to see community storm shelters, Carthage and Smith County as a whole, be, uh, a leader in this region for getting that sort of, uh, getting that off the ground. Uh, but again, I'm not here to advocate against sirens. I just wanted to give y'all some general information and, uh, provide some possible alternatives. But I thank y'all for allowing me the chance to speak.
Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for what you do in general.
Thank you.
I was watching it the last time tornado come through.
Well, thank y'all.
That's where we're at.
Thanks, Anthony.
Uh, we have been three people, uh, three companies who have given in, uh, responded to the request for proposals, and have bought in proposals. The first one that we have here is Justin Raft of American Signal Corporation. Is he here tonight? Oh, this is the one I believe that we found that didn't have a Tennessee contractor license.
Yeah, and they're from, yeah.
The second person is from Precision Communications, Mr. David Butts. Does he speak here, Mr. Butts? Would you like to come speak, please?
I hate the weather guy left. I'm probably right about that.
He's from that town that it happened in.
Oh, it's terrible.
He's got a different spin on it, too.
It's not spin, it's true.
Well, it's different.
You know?
No, that's all right.
So, um, I'm going to talk about the, the product that we bid, uh, which, uh, the spec came out as electromechanical. We, we don't, Whalen does an offer or even manufacture electromechanical sirens. So what we done is electronic siren. So if you would, just so you'll have a, a reference point, I think it's three pages over. So you should be looking at, one more, there you go, one more. Yep. So, these are kind of the three, or the couple of different sirens. The one at the very top's an omnidirectional siren. So, uh, that's a five-cell that you're looking at there, but we actually bid a ten-cell, uh, for the town here. Uh, just kind of tell you a little bit about what's in our bid. It's the one we originally started out with quoting, uh, when we'd done the coverage of this, of the town here. It's ten cells, so it is electronic, so it's not electromechanical. Uh, we actually operate, and we've included that in the bid, we operate off of batteries. So with the ten-cell, we operate off of four batteries. Uh, we don't need AC at all. Uh, we quoted, uh, solar, so all the solar source to power are charge our batteries. That's all we need solar for. I don't even need AC, so, because typically, AC's the first thing that goes during bad weather. Um, we are, we did quote the, uh, two-way option on our siren. Uh, so with the encoder, if you look on the right-hand side of that page, you'll see a black box. That is the activation device. A two-way radio will attach to that box, and we send our signal out to the site via RF. So, there's, it's radio frequency. I don't have any wires going out to it. Uh, it's all done via radio frequency. And I think we, you did have a frequency you were going to use, uh, if I understood correctly. So what we have the ability to do from that box that we put in our bid, is we can send a signal out to that site. The site will self-diagnose itself, and it'll send a report back to that box. That box can be connected to any computer. You don't have to buy that from us, and we didn't include it. Uh, download a free piece of software, put it on that. And now you can see the results of that self-diagnostic test. So that way, uh, most of our customers do their silent tests on their sites at least once or twice a week. That way, you know that that site is doing exactly what it should be doing. Now, because we're electro, uh, we're electronic, um, we don't have any moving parts. Nothing moves on our siren. Everything is electronic. Um, so if a speaker driver goes out, which is in the top, that's what makes the noise, or if I lose an amplifier, we're on a one-to-one ratio. So there's ten speaker drivers and there's ten amplifiers. If I lose two speakers, I still operate, my other eight pick up. So they're on a one-to-one ratio. I can lose an amplifier, everything else still operates. Um, so, that, that report is very important to get back, because it tells us the health of that system. So I know, before I ever come to work on something, if you've got, if you have a problem, we know exactly what we're bringing with us. There's no guesswork about it. So, again, we did include solar, uh, we're, we're not connecting to AC at all. And in a nutshell, that's it. It's that simple, that straightforward.
And you guys have their full bid in your packets as well?
So this is, I'm sorry, sixty-four thousand, is that the, is that the right one, sixty-four thousand? Is that Precision?
Is this the one that's going to marry up to the Gordonsville thing? And we can use the same, we don't have to buy a computer, we can actually marry it up, and it'll, it'll
Correct.
be a little cheaper?
Correct. So Gord, Gordonsville has placed their order, and they're getting the, the ten-cell, the exact thing that I quoted you in my bid, that they've placed that order.
And our system will marry up with theirs, so it'd be a little cheaper on the computer side of it.
Actually, I didn't even include a computer, because you didn't ask for it.
But, so, but we could, you could hook up this to there?
Yep, yep.
So this is the one for sixty-four thousand? And then can we speak here from the other gentleman, the gentleman in the gas stations? This is Mr. Steve Bridge from Communication Groups Inc.
And I didn't bring any handouts, but I think there's, there's information in here.
The whole bid packet.
Here's his big packet, um, okay.
The, probably the primary difference between my siren and sirens is we are bidding electromechanical. The control equipment is very similar as far as reporting the health to the siren, battery level and all that. We also put it in as an AC charging point. It does use batteries. They all, I mean, all mechanicals, electronic, I think they all are going to use battery backup or run off the batteries. The, uh, AC is just there to charge. We can do, I didn't remember, I don't think there was anything in there about asking for solar. We can do solar. We maintain a hundred and thirteen sirens in the city of Nashville, eighty-five in Williamson County, and about thirty-five, I think in Wilson County. We have some solar in Davidson County. The last twenty that went in are solar, and they have five or six prior to that. We do see a lot more problems with battery, uh, premature battery failures in the solar. Just because you're going to have six or seven days of overcast weather, your batteries are not going to charge fully. And it's going to cut down the time, amount of time the siren can sound. The difference between electronic sirens and electromechanical siren, they may spec out pretty close. If you ask anybody, I know the city of, uh, Williamson County has a number of electronic sirens and a number of mechanical sirens. You might want to ask anybody down there how far they can hear the sirens, their electronic sirens versus the mechanical sirens. And they will tell you, hands down, the electromechanical sirens are much louder and can be heard a greater distance. I'm open for any questions, if you have any, I don't.
I, I see you have a question for both now, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask. We were recommended a response time of two hours. Can either of you do that with your company?
I'm an hour away.
Wait, I'm sorry.
I'm an hour away. We're in Nashville by the airport.
Where did that, the two-hour come up? Where did that come from?
That was the EMA.
From the, the bid from the, okay.
From Mr., yes, and the, the, uh...
What's that, response time for what, like repairs? Repair?
Yeah, like if it goes down, he's saying, he's the one, Mr. Detective, Wilson County, says you need someone there within two hours, or you're, it's not, not doing any good. It takes any longer than that, because theoretically, they should want to take it down.
But that is a bidder?
No, no, this is the man, uh, Hack, Marty, Marty Hack, who runs the EMA for all of the sirens in Wilson and Wilson, all over Dixon County. So they've got a huge, all the way from Mount Jupiter.
I might say something. The, the response time on that is really, well, in your case, if you're talking about one siren and one controller, it's kind of a toss-up. The response time on the control point is really the critical point. Like Metro with a hundred and thirteen sirens, if one or two sirens go down for any reason, it's not, it's not the end of the world there. If the control point goes down, then you can't set off a hundred and thirteen sirens. That is critical. So, they don't, they don't consider it critical unless ten percent of the sirens are failing.
Well, you're still, just like the electronic siren, if one part of it goes out, it'll still go off, or what?
There's not, well, only one part that go out is the motor, and...
So if it goes out, the whole system's down?
It's just the one siren, yeah, I mean, yeah. It's, um...
How often have you seen that happen? How often?
I've replaced one motor. And that was three weeks after it was installed, and it was a factory defect.
So you're typically not going to see a siren go down?
It's a, it's, it's a very similar to a starter motor in a car. But how many times, and you can ask the fire chief, how many times have you replaced a motor in a federal queue siren? My guess is never. And it's basically the same motor within the siren.
And you, y'all both have, do you, all, both of you service this area at all? I mean, middle Tennessee service?
Well, I do, yeah.
We service five states.
Do you have, I, I didn't see.
So they're going Gordonsville? Yeah, they're going Gordonsville, that's right, that's down the road.
Yeah, but, but currently, are, so you have some, you have some in different states, but not in this particular area?
Well, Precision Communication doesn't directly have any, little, like you asked for in the spec, in middle Tennessee.
Right.
We've, we've got hundreds and hundreds of sirens that we take care of over five states. Tennessee, Alabama, Mississippi, Louisiana, Texas.
And would you have a two-hour response time if we had something to...
I don't really need a two-hour response time, though. Because that report that you're going to get back from that tells me exactly what's wrong with that siren.
So you can remotely repair it?
No, I've got to come on site, but I know what we're bringing to fix it. So, if we get that phone call, uh, our, our trucks stay stocked. We stock common parts, which are speaker drivers, amplifiers, and if you're tying to AC, I'd have a battery charger on there. Those are the three common parts that go out.
I, I kind of, I'm still, my mind's not made up. I'm still kind of got a few things away between a motor possibly going out versus, you know, having ten different ways, you know, two go out, eight get going, versus which one's louder, versus a tornado landing, and it wouldn't have even mattered, you know, and weather radios. So, I mean, I, I feel like I still got a little bit to think about. I think there's a lot of great options on the table. But I still, like, for me, I, I feel like giving a little more time to the thought and then going out, and then judging next, next month. We make decisions one way or the other next month, though, and get this closed.
But we put, then we don't make a vote till next month.
Okay, so do y'all have a motion to table for next month?
I'm only done discussing right now, though. Just, I mean, we want to make sure everybody...
Okay, well, is there any...
This is the opportunity to ask a question.
Yeah, they're, they're mother here.
Sure, go, go right here. Any questions, concerns?
Might I say something?
Sure.
When you're thinking about warning people, please disregard what, what that gentleman said. Part of what he said was very accurate. There is not one single thing that's a hundred percent accurate. Look, and I know, I, I know he was going to bring up James Span, because I, I, he's a follower of James Span, I know that. I have James Span, that's James Span. He's my weather guy in Alabama. And what you need to look at is you need to look at every option available to you to warn your citizens. I, I have James Span's app, it's not a hundred percent. I have a weather radio, it's not a hundred percent. And he even made mention of Midland weather radios. Right now, the National Weather Service towers are down in Jefferson County. That's James Span's, that's where he lives. So there's nothing one hundred percent. So when you're thinking about warning your public, think of everything. If you can put it in, put it in. Um, and, and think about A-Rab Alabama, and he brought that up. They're not moving away from sirens because they thought they were old technology. They didn't want to maintain them anymore. They just, they didn't, they had a problem with that. Uh, I know the mayor personally, and we helped move those sirens to Meridian to Sicily. And that's where they are today. They're glad to get them.
We're looking at one siren, and we're looking at, so main, parent, and maintenance cost involved here. What are we looking at as an annual maintenance cost?
There, there's not one. We don't even recommend taking out a maintenance contract. We have very few maintenance contracts.
So is it like, are y'all, like, basically guaranteed if something goes down, y'all are just going to, y'all like lifetime warranty it, or what?
No, no, there's warranty. So, on the Whalen, I'll let you speak on the federal stuff. Uh, on the Whalen, um, you've got a two-year, this is factory warranty, let me speak about that first, factory warranty. The first two years, they replace any part. They either repair it or replace it. Year three, four, and five, there's a flat rate fee of seven... They either repair it or replace it. Year three, four, and five, there's a flat rate fee of seventy-five dollars per module. So let's say a speaker driver goes out, those are right at a thousand bucks. They replace it for seventy-five dollars. So that's the first five years. Labor, the first year you have that siren, our labor's free. After that, we can just do time and material.
The other thing I was gonna mention too is, even though serving in the city of Carthage, Carthage is the side of Smith County, there's a possible way we could, you know, maybe see if the county wants to cover some of the costs too, which would be another good way to delay. Because again, like I said, I mean, I don't think you're wrong. I mean, we do everything, and then, but also we got a budget too and figure out what we're gonna be spending, you know, but, I mean, a weather radio plus a siren plus, you know, a storm shelter, I mean, those, that's the ideal situation. Can we do the ideal situation all at once? Probably not, but we can start building towards that, so. And, so, I mean, and, and then my other thing is I wanna call, you know, I wanna call around and just, I wanna ask around independently too. I know y'all were trying to sell your products too, so I totally understand that, and you, you know, I'm not saying y'all are, you know, two different opinions here, but I'd like to call around and do just some independent research on it as well.
Now, I can tell you, of the sirens that we maintain in the middle Tennessee, the bulk of them, the biggest customer is the city of Nashville. They're on a maintenance contract. I can tell you, it's a very lucrative contract for us.
Yeah.
They just want, they want the warm and fuzzy feeling that they've got everything covered. Williamson County has not, never has had a contract. City of Franklin, City of Brenwood, Wilson County, never had a contract. It's always been strictly time and materials until they come out ahead.
And, and you're, these are your sirens you're talking about?
Yes, they're all federal signal, yes. If you want to do maintenance contract, great. We make good money on maintenance contracts.
So I was looking, just, just to sum it up a little bit, do sixty-four thousand, if you had the add-ins on here, is that about fifty-one I'm looking at or fifty-two?
The, uh, why I offered the, the non-rotating electromechanical, the total system was thirty-nine, well, forty. Uh, if you want to go with a higher output rotating siren, which does, then you've got two motors in it. But we still, the failure rate is tight on those. They've been around for-
So that would bring it up-
Two thousand one sirens have been around forever.
So that would be option A?
Yeah, that was option A.
And then, what's the option B?
And then option B is, is basically to power the siren off of utility power until utility power fails, and then it reverts to battery, which gives you much longer runtime.
So with all of those upgrades, am I adding closer to fifty-two thousand or something?
Fifty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-one.
Okay.
We're, we're, we're looking at installing these up by the, even the-
I've got permission from the nine-one-one board for-
Nine-one-one?
For our, our siren to be put at the EMS building right across from the high school.
I think that'd be appropriate, 'cause that, that's high, it's on the hill.
It's on the hill's highest place.
If we did, yeah.
And that, and the coverage that we'll get from that, I saw the map, it will cover the entire city at the female rated decibel level that we need to have up there.
So we have a location, we got two options.
But I didn't, see, here's the thing, I have to go back, if we go with what, different options, it's gonna be a different computer system. We have to get permission to put another computer up there.
Yeah.
Which shouldn't be a problem, I'm saying we have to do that too.
Does yours computer have to, is it the same, are we talking about the same computer?
It's basically, it's basically the same thing. The controller can be tied to a computer. For one siren, I've never had anybody ask for that. Uh, with a lot of sirens, it's, you know, you definitely want that, 'cause you want it pulling all of them, give you the health. And then we have to-
You can tell what the health is.
Then we're gonna have to run an electric line and we're gonna have to pay electric bill on that line to the EMS.
If I'm under, did I understand you saying you could do this manually rather than a computer or?
You can't do it manually from the control, from the control point, yeah.
Yeah, we don't. We don't want manual.
Okay, I'm just saying, what's, I don't know the difference. What's the-
I mean, manual, someone has to actually set the siren off.
No, it'll, it'll, it'll poll twice a day anyway. It'll poll itself, it'll just show you an error.
Having a manual option, if we add a siren, an option, not saying we don't wanna do that, but have a manual option in case there's something crazy happens, might not be a bad idea on both sirens.
David, will you speak on your manual option? I think you can do eight of, so, you say you could put, send eight people to get in there or something like that? Your manual options that you have.
Yeah, I, that's what I've got on there. I, I did not compute, include a computer at all, 'cause you didn't ask for it, so.
Right, but what I'm, what I'm saying is tell us how your manual option works, 'cause we, if we, if we decide to go this way, which we don't know what we're doing yet, we'll hook into, we'll give them Gordonsville, hook it into their computer, 'cause it also has to buy two computers.
And that's to diagnose, correct?
The computer?
Yeah, that would give us the report.
Yeah, well, the main reason to move, to migrate to the computer-based is to connect directly to the National Weather Service. So, and I, I don't know if you under, you understood how all that takes place. So the computer connects directly to the National Weather Service. So when the National Weather Service issues and you determine whether you, you activate on a tornado watch or a warning, whichever you choose. So whenever your county comes under that from the National Weather Service, it'll set your siren off.
What do most people do? They do it under watches or warnings only?
Warnings.
Warnings.
Warnings only, yeah.
We don't wanna do it under watch.
Yeah. They're going off all night.
Then you're starting, then you're, you're crying wolf and people start, get very-
Please be serious.
Um, one thing now, of course, if, if you were to spread out with more sirens, the federal signal system does do polygons. In other words, such as Nashville, where you've got that many sirens, if a tornado warning box comes in and just covers the top corner of the city, there's no reason to set sirens off in the complete opposite end of the county that is the sun shining. So the tornado, the polygon system will allow that to set off just the sirens that are in the box.
We're, we're not big enough for that.
No, it's, it's not, yes.
See, Nashville pretty much ignores us, that's why we watch him, because he, he's probably saved countless lives on, you know, on it, so. But like you were saying too, the more, the better, so, I mean, I, I, I just, I would like to, I'd still like to table this, so that way we can all do a little bit of research. Let's vote on this, figure it out, you know, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm getting one over a little bit on it, uh, but I'd still like to make some phone calls.
Can I make one, ask one more question just for clarification? You said that one siren type is louder than the other, which was it again?
Electromechanical is louder than-
Is louder, okay.
Yeah.
What's the DV? What's the DV?
A hundred and thirty.
Okay, so we have a-
What's your DV?
A hundred and thirty.
Yeah, they're the same. It's female regulations, it has to be that.
But a hundred and thirty, go out and listen to it.
At a hundred and thirty?
That's, that's all I'm gonna say, is go listen to it.
So we have any further discussion?
Yeah, you said that you talked to EMS.
That we're allowed to-
Is that the best possible location?
That is, that will cover the entire city with one siren. It'll cover all the entire-
Is that the best possible location?
According to the height of the-
Also too, you've got your emergency management station up there, so-
Well, it's the highest, I'm just asking.
Yeah. It's one of the highest points in the city.
That's what I was looking at.
If we have, for example, we have a natural disaster, that's where headquarters is. That's where our government goes to take care of things. And that's why I was talking about with that button. If, if need be, that's a good location to have that, if we put it up there, 'cause when we-
There's some of their twenty-four hour, seven days a week.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. And so I think that that makes-
And then they, they put out weather alerts too.
Perfect sense, to, if, if we, if we get one, put it up there.
Also not one, or one of the, is it channel four, one of those, uh, does the, what do they call it?
The weather alert, where they see the temperatures?
Yeah, I think they showed that.
It's, oh, it's possible. I don't, I never knew that.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'll make a motion that we table this and vote on this next month, uh, business.
I'll say-
We have the motion second, any further discussion? Uh, now, all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Do we want the gentleman?
I don't think there's need for that.
I don't think we need to have them drive out here again. Yeah, we'd be, we'll let them know.
And if you have any further information you want to send us, just send it forward, we'll do that too, okay?
Thanks for coming out and explaining. It helps us make a better decision instead of, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys. Be safe for a month.
Okay, the next is, we're gonna talk about the city hall building here. Uh, and we've got four supervisors who've asked to address this.
The gifts.
Uh, Chief, Chief Davis, would you like, and then-
I would like to, uh, ask a question. We discussed this last meeting, we voted that we were not gonna purchase this building, and then all of a sudden, we started getting letters from supervisors. Who encouraged the supervisors to write these letters?
I think they just want to address this building right now and concerns.
Here's where, here's where we're at, Mayor. Um, and, and I'll be the first to say it, I want a new building, okay?
Be nice.
It'd be nice to have a new building. I think it's a, a thing. But I think that we need so many other things beforehand. And I think that there are some needs in this building that we need to repair. The first time I've heard about this freezing cold office back here, which was cold, and I went to air it, it's nice today, that needs to be fixed. And there's things we can fix for a lot less money than getting a new building.
That's what the supervisors want to address tonight, what can be done to this building.
But if it's a need, it doesn't pop up when a specific building comes up specifically at a specific time. That's not a need, that's a want. It's a nice building, I won't overlook that. It's great, but it's not a need.
Again, they're, they're going to, they're going to address their concerns, what needs to be fixed in this building, I think, is what we're talking about.
I, can I just say, this is not new. We talked about this before, in, with the previous mayor, about the condition of this building, and we've looked at, actually have looked at, over the years, other buildings. So it's not new in, in my history. It's always been a need, it's on the back burner, because you're right, there are other things needed, but it's not new. There, there have been plenty of needs here, been on the back burner.
Well, I think if we need to fix the building, we need to fix the building and just be done, you know, I mean, just get a list of stuff that needs to be fixed and put it in the budget and fix it.
And we let the supervisors address that.
Yeah, that's probably what I want to hear from the supervisor.
And so here, and, and I'm following, listening to supervisors on it, but as far as this specific building, that was voted on and that's done.
And let me point out that that building's also in the foot zone. I've got the documentation.
So I wanna hear about it for a need, for other things that may come up down the road, and that's the aspect, I will look at it, but I'm not, I'm not, yeah.
I was talking about the building she wanted to buy.
No, I know, it needs roof.
This is, this is just city hall here, so-
Further water came up here.
Would y'all just list here what your needs are? Okay.
They did, they didn't have any, so whatever.
Let the supervisors address their needs here. Okay, Chief, would you like to start?
I can. Would you like me to go up there and step in?
Whatever's coming, whatever you're happy.
Let me first start off by saying that I'm not speaking on behalf of that building down there, okay? I'll just say this. So I've worked here for about eighteen-plus years now, okay, guys? Uh, I've seen some things change in this building, been improved, seen walls painted, floors added, things of that nature. I can tell you that none of that's happened in my department since I've been here, okay? I have tiled floors that are cracked, tiles are missing, uh, the bathroom is old, deplorable, if you will, whatever you wanna say. It sits about five feet from the actual dispatchers in there. It is embarrassing to have to use the restroom when you have another person sitting out next to it, okay? It's just inappropriate, okay? But it's something that we've had and we deal with it, okay? We, we understand that. We've signed up for that. We, we understand that. The carpet in there's been there for a long time, there's stains all over. It's embarrassing when you have the Secret Service, which has this down here a couple of weeks ago, TVI, things of that nature. If I have to bring them into my department, it's just embarrassing. It really is, 'cause it's so old and outdated, nothing's ever been done. I personally think that stuff needs to be done to fix this building. I also think that y'all probably need to look at some point in the time, finding another building or doing something for the future of City Hall and the police department. Not saying it has to be that building by any means, 'cause the reason I've never really brought it up before is just because there's never really a time and a place to bring it up, as far as was there a building that was even remotely out there that would be worthwhile to have a City Hall or a police department. I'm not just gonna bring stuff to you if I don't think it really is gonna gain any traction anyways, you know, there's other things that you guys have said are more important also. I know sewer, water, things of that nature, very important, streets, stuff like that, so, um, you know, we, we always make things work for the most part. We try to, but there is some things that need to be fixed in the police department. We don't have much space. We have seven hundred, eight hundred square feet of space. It's very small, not very much room for us, we need improvements. We would obviously like to have more room at some point in time, 'cause we're, it's been like that for, ever since I worked here, a lot longer before that too. So, um, I think we need to look at possibly, I don't wanna say adding on to this building, but whatever y'all think would be best. I think something needs to be done at some point in time.
I would like to say, just for being in the same industry that he's in, technically, their dispatch is not really legal, because you're not supposed to have any officers in the dispatch area while she's working on her computer. So they're not supposed to be, that's the door they come in, they're right in dispatch.
To me, space is the biggest issue.
And they, I mean, they only have, they only have an interview room to interview suspects.
Y'all are sitting in our interview room right now, just so you know.
I mean, they do need bigger areas.
It's embarrassing when you have to talk to people in here about important things, and there's people in the hallway painting water bills and stuff, guys, okay? Or there's already another meeting, or-
It's a small-town magic man.
Yeah, I'm telling you, it's wonderful.
As far as like, almost like a punch list, which is what I'm, I'm used to, that's what I kinda go to.
Yes, sir.
You're saying bad restroom, bad flooring, small, of course, but as far as what's there right now, is there anything else that you got?
Walls probably need to be painted. Uh, I think the bathroom needs to be redone at some point in time, uh, and then flooring.
Got that. And that was put into the budget, the flooring and the paint, right?
I think there's already money in the budget for some of these things, like building maintenance repairs.
Yeah, I think that those two are on there.
But we, we, like-
The light's good.
Uh, yeah, I think they're, they're, they're satisfactory.
Anything else that I could write down for that?
Not off the top of my head. The main things are, like I said, the floor is terrible, but, and, and just no space. I mean, it's just, there's no space.
And so, like I said, this is the first time I'm hearing about it, and I know, I guess Bart was heard about it before, but I've been here three and a half years and first time. And so what, and these are things we need to get fixed, and if we know about them, we can fix them. We don't know about them-
You're, you're exactly right.
Yeah, we can't do nothing else.
And some of that stuff's easy to fix.
Yeah.
I'd make the suggestion that we, we let each department head or, or whoever, you know, make a list of what needs to be done, and that's, so we've got it to look at it.
I would think a big-
Especially if I were here budgeting.
Or, let me ask you this, was there any, ever any emails sent to you to encourage you to write a letter?
I can't, I'm not gonna say this, let me say this, I can't remember if there was or not. There was emails exchanged, but I can't remember exactly what they said. Does that make sense? I, I offered to write a letter to explain stuff for y'all, obviously. I wasn't here at the last council meeting either, so.
I'll be glad to address that. We, here's the, how the sequence of events happened. We didn't go looking for a building. This thing came up and they called us.
For planning?
They, uh, for planning, Mr. Call called and he separated his buildings, 'cause he wanted to sell one. And I think during that meeting, he said, we could, we'd be glad to offer the building to y'all at a really reduced price and a good note. But anyway, that led into just a discussion with all of the supervisors.
You're changing the subject though. We're talking about the problems with this building.
I understand, let me get to that, please. So we started talking about this building and what, what is here, and we started hearing for, for the first time, me anyway, some of the, the major stuff here, and that we needed to share with y'all. So that's when I said, let's have a time for them to come and talk to all of you, and, and we've got Chief here, we've got Derek who wants to speak. Danielle would like to say a few words, I would like to say a few words, and we're just saying, just listen to what they have to say, if you have a minute, and then you'll know exactly what they know, yes, sir.
Just to, to make it, uh, not so drawn out, I mean, I just think we could, we could very easily, instead of making it this big thing, say supervisors, just email us a list of the things-
I think that would be more appropriate to do that on that, through grandstanding.
That would be lovely.
Okay.
That would be lovely.
Can I, I wasn't even finished with what I was saying, so if I can finish, we can just have as a list of the things that, like a punch list, things that need to be done around here, instead of making it this big thing, let's just get things done.
Okay.
I don't wanna talk for two hours about arguing, let's just get things fixed.
So if, we'll, we'll talk with the supervisors, let them put together their wish list, and then we'll bring it back to you, that's okay?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, yes, sir.
Make a motion that we put this on the next month's agenda with a list for the supervisors to discuss, so we can add to the budget that's pending now.
Second.
Okay, you're gonna have to repeat that.
I, I talk fast.
Can we, can we put, make it so it's brought to our budget, uh, workshop?
Yes.
Because I think-
Then we can talk with appropriate.
Okay.
I have an objection before you repeat it. Do you want us to email you those lists prior, so you guys can see them?
I mean, you can. I mean, it's not a problem.
I would like that.
Yes, that way we can look at it and see.
So will it be a list and cost?
Okay.
Probably not.
Uh, I'm not gonna be able to estimate cost.
Just, just needs and then we can kinda prioritize it.
Sam and Jesse probably gonna gotta deal with things with cost, so we-
No idea. I would.
And also, let's say it's a big list of things, I'm sure it'll be, and we may, we may need to prioritize it. Let's say this year, we'll do this, we'll plan on doing this next year, and treat it like we do, we do our own family budget.
I'm gonna rescind that motion. My new motion is going to be that the supervisors bring a list of repairs to this building to the next budget meeting, which is at five o'clock in April, and then we will discuss it.
Can we have it performed though?
Is it, yeah, five o'clock.
No, you want me to email that?
Yeah, put joy, give, have joy.
Okay, and we will be emailing the list prior to the meeting, so we can look at all the things that are on.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion second. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Uh.
Yeah, I was trying to get a word in there. Um, just, and we need to keep an open mind that, once we get a cost, would it be cheaper to do another building?
Sure, yeah, we, we, we will do whatever.
It may be huge to fix this old building, so let's keep that open mind.
Oh, I, I'm with you. Oh, I, I'm with you.
I agree. It may, and it may be more cost efficient.
We own some buildings already too, so.
Yeah.
Okay, good point. Any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, so all of the other reports, we'll just, y'all, put them down, we'll get them to the council. Thank you so much, appreciate it. Okay, going into new business, uh, non cemetery mowing proposal, Derek, uh, we have, uh, Mr. Keith Longcare, is that what you're?
That's correct, yes. Uh, you're finding your packet of quote, um, for the, for the long mowing of all right of ways, it's roughly around fifty acres, I think, I don't know, seven, seven to ten days. Uh, you see the bid in there? Uh, we're asking, uh, uh, if we could possibly do this, that it would free up two extra personnel that we could put on other projects. Yes, sir.
Were there any other bids put in?
There was, yes. Uh, there was a bid that was about twenty thousand dollars higher than the one you have.
Do we have all the bids?
I have a copy of them right here.
So, so just, sorry, I'm slow sometimes. Uh, so what basically, we're trying to contract out all of our mowing from here on out.
That is correct.
And so our public works is not going to do any more mowing. We're going to go ahead and take care. We'll, we'll contract everybody to mow now, correct?
I think it's going to save, what, about a thousand dollars a year?
It's, yeah, it's really a, a wash, whatever, three years, I think, because we would have to purchase.
The eighteen thousand dollars.
Two mowers every, every, uh.
I think we should look at all the bids that were placed.
So we're saving on equipment, we're saving on time.
Well, the two men will be able to do different things instead of mowing.
Okay, so that's time and that's also, you know, we're saving a lot on fuel, everything like that, and I mean, we're contracting that out, but we don't have to, yeah.
And this is non cemetery, this is everything.
This is everything, this is the mowing for the city.
As long as we're doing bids and everything like that.
Yeah, we only got one bid in the packet. I was just wanting to see if we see all three bids.
Yeah, sure.
I think that's a really good idea.
It's smart.
Saves, it saves money on time, time of money.
What, what, I mean, they figured it, I think Scott figured it to be about a thousand dollars.
You can do that whole thing.
Yeah, and that's, that's a salary, I mean, that's a, how much time we spend, how many, how many hours we spend a week?
Well, we spend forty hours a week with two men mowing for eight months out of the year.
Okay, there you go.
Yeah, that's, that's where it saves the money.
It's more, it's more than a thousand, right?
That's the, that's what the finance guy said. Ask him, I don't.
And here's another one, which one? That's per mowing.
Gotcha.
We'll take, we'll take this one.
Twenty-five hundred dollars.
I'm in.
This one is lower per dollar wise.
Okay.
But, uh, this certain business only has one man and one lot more.
Does this change with, uh, gas price?
No, sir, I've, uh, I would like to, if, if y'all are okay with kind of do like we've done in the cemeteries where it's maybe a three-year contract.
Yeah, which that's up for renewal, that's next, guys.
He says how many?
Two, twenty-four mowings per.
Four people.
He has five mowers and five people.
I mean.
Per cut, and you're saying seven to ten days over eight months. What was it? How many cuts, how many cuts you basically estimating on that?
Uh, twenty, I think twenty-four to thirty cuts.
Twenty-four to thirty cuts, okay. So we call it twenty, we call it twenty-seven cuts. I'm sorry, I might have some things up, so. Thirty-three, let me write this down, we're going to apologize. Two-five-zero, and then he had two-two-five-zero cut.
That was per cut.
At times twenty-seven, so.
Is that, how do they, you can compare them, cut?
Yeah, compare cost.
Are we talking about as opposed to one man? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the, the.
Well, I don't think it matters how many men they use it, they're bidding that price, it's going to be the same price, he's one or a hundred.
You see bidding only, it's a one man to do it.
It doesn't matter, cool.
Yeah.
He breaks down and then he's always coming back and saying.
The overall.
I got, the third one's in here somewhere.
All right. That overall one is, uh, it is sixty grand.
The twenty-five hundred per mowing.
Yeah.
Yeah, this one's the highest one.
Yeah, and the other one's thirty-three.
There's another.
Thirty-three is saving us a significant.
Well, there's another one in here too, the one from.
One person, one mower.
I don't think.
Would he be willing? You all, yeah, because you need two people, forty hours, so you're going to need.
The one I recommend is that guy has five one mowers and five people.
That was the one with the two-two-five-zero? That's the third one.
I know, I had it in here a minute ago.
So you don't, you don't think what they would propose you do?
How much was this?
This one, this one. That's, that should be in your packet, because that's the one that's put in the packet.
Keith Longcare, that's the one you're speaking of?
Even though, uh, Mr. Bane said he could do it, you don't think he can do it because he only has one person.
That would be, yes, that would be, the one I can give you on your packet would be my recommendation. That's mine and Alyssa's recommendation.
And, and maybe Derek also mentioned that, that they would only be paid if they mowed, so it's a dry season or whatever, it's only per mow, it's not like a contracted type.
I motion that we go ahead and, um, and award the bid to Keith Longcare on that. Yeah, before we get second, I apologize.
Thank you. You took this one before, I got to look at this one.
He's saying Keith has multiple mowers, which is needed because.
I don't think we can hold, I mean, a, a bid, a bid's a bid.
Yeah.
If the guy says I can cut the grass for thirty-three thousand dollars, I wonder if he's twenty, it doesn't matter.
I think this was a, uh, it's an RFP, it was a request for proposal, so it's a little different that who can provide the best service for the best price.
Based on the supervisor.
Yeah, based on the supervisor.
And well, also too.
We've got the best price.
When you're, when you're mowing, sometimes you get that summer where it's raining and it's raining and it's raining and you can't get that done. And when you got one guy, that slows it down. And especially since it's we're paying out that flat fee, if we're paying out that flat fee, it doesn't matter.
All the people at this table that argued over money, I never thought she'd be the one arguing for a higher price. Just I wanted to put that out there.
I used to mow a lot and I still mow a lot, so.
I know how many Joey has on his crew to mow just our cemeteries.
Yeah, but having an extra person goes a lot, it's having one extra person is like having, it's like you three times, yeah.
She gets the job, maybe he'll hire more people and have more mowers. Started with one person, me.
I try to hold it against you.
If our supervisor is feeling, I, I don't know, I, how much, because we're getting two people.
That's the cheapest one out.
At the same time.
Could go at forty thousand.
And, and this one is, that's, that's per mowing.
We used to, at that time anyway, all the, all the.
More than this.
We always used to be, still is.
Just out of curiosity, did the one that put the bid inside, he was only going to be one person?
Well, one thing about it, if he can't, if we pick him and he can't do it.
We fire him.
We, we get rid of, we fire him.
It's true.
You know, his contract, his job, he can't do it.
What's the difference to you? I know how much money.
Well, one's.
One's thirty-three, seven fifty, one's, uh, anywhere from thirty-four to forty thousand.
Wait a minute, this, Derek, Derek, excuse me, isn't this per mowing, uh, uh, we're, we're not talking about a contract?
Yeah, it's broke out on his quote per mowing too.
Yeah, so how much per mowing are we going, and again, it won't be every, it will just be when you need, is that right?
That is per mowing.
Yeah, that's like. I, I'll give you all my two cents and I mow.
That's what we, that we don't ever do.
I'll give you all my two cents. I mow about ten acres and I work sixty hours a freaking week and I have to get in and mow ten acres every five, seven to ten days, and my boys are my weed eaters. And I can just tell you that, like, that's just ten acres, you know, like, it, I would say if, if, maybe if this guy does hire more people, fine, but if he's got one or he doesn't have a plan, it ain't going to, it ain't going to happen.
But, but here's the thing, we can't punish him.
He's a one man guy.
I was just going off where Eric said. Is he a one, did he say that he's a one man crew?
That's, yes, that's what he's always been.
Well, and Derek, it doesn't do mostly.
We've always done that.
We may have only been doing lawns.
Do we, does anybody know these people?
I, I do know Mr. Bane and I know he's mowed a long time. He may only have one person if he's mowing lawns, but if.
Yeah, so I didn't look at that, because I don't want to know, because I don't want to have a personal connection with them.
And I don't have any person, I'm just looking at the lowest.
So.
Well, I'd say I'm abstaining from voting on it completely.
Okay.
So you're voting for voting on it?
Yeah, I, I can't vote on that.
Does he knows people?
Cause you know him?
I didn't even look at the people.
Well, I know him and he also cuts my grass, so I mean, I'm not going to, I'm not going to get into that.
Yeah.
Does he do a good job?
Does a real good job. And the problem is he's not one, and he's not one person. He has a two man.
I don't know.
Well, that's important, because we're being told one thing and it's something else.
He does have a two man crew and he has two lawn mowers and he can hire more people.
Hey, I, I, I'm not a, I, I don't care, I think it's a good idea. They're close enough in price, so.
They're not close though.
I'm, I'm abstaining anyway.
Forty. Yeah, it says forty, it's eight hundred. Versus thirty-three.
I was just going off of Derek's.
I think twenty-two fifty is off the table.
It's off the table.
So Derek.
I'd like to make a motion. I, I would make a motion and I mean, you guys.
Are you reciting yours, Cole? I'm sorry. Well, he started, but it hasn't really been seconded because you guys wanted to look at.
I was in the middle of motion, but that's cool. Um, and I'll, I'll withdraw my motion, because I, it doesn't matter one way or the other to me. I just, I feel like people know one of those people and that's why we're getting it and that's where I, that's where I get a little fond of, so. Um, and I'm just going off of Derek's recommendation, because he's the one who does this all the time. We don't do it and that was his recommendation, but I don't know. So I'll withdraw my motion, y'all make a motion however y'all want to.
Go with James.
Yes, sir.
So no disrespect to anybody, and you guys can do whatever you want to do with it, but I'd make a motion that we go with the, uh, the cheaper option, uh, Mr. Bane's, that's what I would put up there.
I said a motion?
That's my motion.
Second.
Anyway, I have a motion second, any discussion? Now, is he available? Is that, I mean, are these people all available? Have you talked to them about?
Why'd they put a bid in if they weren't available?
And for two people, starting out with two people, okay, okay.
Well, the contract doesn't say you have to have two people, you just have to do the number.
As long as it's getting done, I'm good with it.
I know it's not the devil mowing something.
All I'm reason, all I'm saying that is because they need two men also right now.
This is the person who does yours, is what we're voting on?
No, I'm not voting on it.
I know, but I'm asking you, he's got a, it looks nice, he does a good job.
He's been doing it for three years, so.
You're happy with your lawn.
Okay.
I'll be fine.
All.
There you go.
Hey, there's some bad bowers out there, I'm just saying.
One clarification, I think someone said if it doesn't work out, we can try someone else, right?
Sure.
Okay, all right, all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed?
I'm not opposed, I'm abstaining by vote, good or con.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Which it goes to, it's still.
I got it.
I just had to put that on there.
That's the, that's what you're supposed to do, you did the right thing.
Okay, the next is the cemetery mowing contract, you have it in your.
I wouldn't go to vote either way.
This is the one we should run.
You got it in your packet, uh, we can renew it for another year for the same price he's going to charge us, same price.
Yes, unless, he, he said he could, um, ask for amendment if gas went above five dollars.
Say a motion.
Excuse me, just. Oh, I'm sorry, say.
We have discussion after we have the motions.
Yes, you have a motion, right?
Second.
I, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Motion to accept that bid.
With Joey.
Whoever's been doing it.
Okay, okay, I have a second here.
Uh, here, it was Councilman Evil.
Evil, okay, any discussion? This, this again, it's just extending it one more year for the same price and you can use it. All right, all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed?
Well, it, it says up to three years, so, but it can, with the ability to renew every year. Okay, okay, I just, I was going to make it so we.
Action to renew this year. Um, okay, Chief Davis, we have a person here.
All right, yes. Say something real quick, I missed this opportunity earlier. I'd be remiss if I didn't say the bid. As opposed to Mr. Ezel, being a C of M Co, he does an excellent job for us. Uh, I think he goes above and beyond. He's always professional, very courteous to work with, always gives us way more information if we ever need or ask for.
Or if we've ever had.
And, uh, it would be an absolute travesty if we lost him.
Agreed.
I want y'all to know that.
We, we all feel the same way down here. We're, we're, we're in agreement with you a hundred percent.
And I, I don't know, so, I'm sorry, I should have said that earlier, but anyway, um, after last council meeting, I had a officer who turned in his resignation letter. He wanted to go to another department, so.
Which officer?
Uh, Officer Wicks. Anyway, so that led us into, uh, taking applications again.
No wait, I'm just waiting till you get done.
Okay, okay, and, uh, with the help of, uh, City Recorder, Ms. Bane, we were actually able to put it, post the job on Indeed, actually, so we've got a lot more applications this time. Actually worked out a lot better and, uh, after getting well over twenty applications, uh, I finally settled on, after interviewing, uh, several people. Uh, Mr. Joshua Blazek here, he lives right down the street here. He is, he was a sergeant at the, uh, Sheriff's Office in the, uh, as a correctional officer. He's been in the military, is the Air Force, and also has a two-year paralegal associate's degree. I think he would be an excellent fit here and that's my recommendation, so we can hire him. He is not certified, we will have to send him, obviously, but I think he's more than capable of doing the job, so. Does anybody have any questions for me or would you please?
Hope he sat through all this and hadn't gotten out of hand.
I appreciate it.
All right, yes, sir.
Motion to take Chief's recommendation for hire and hire Mr. Blazek.
Second.
We have a motion second, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Opposed?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you guys very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're better than worse.
Get that handled, Steve, here we go again.
All right, Derek. Again, we have a new hire, public works.
Yeah, we're, uh.
I'll be getting chatted, I'm going too much.
We had, uh, one to resign, uh, we put applications out.
Say to that one, could you say to that one?
That resigned?
Yeah.
It was, uh, Jason. Uh, put applications out and we got fifteen plus applicants, uh, we've done a lot of interviews. And, uh, Mr. Stephen Will is standing here beside me is, is who we recommend, uh, he has experience in installing water sewer lines, works with construction from now.
I believe you've got his resume.
Should have your page. This is our, our, mine and Alyssa's recommendation.
Motion we hire?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
All right, thank you, no opposed.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Hey, I've got, I got a couple, I got one new thing, or two new things to add, I was going to ask you all about, but I'll do that in a minute, and they'll, they'll be quick.
Okay, the next item is debt, debt payoff of, hold this a second.
I'm sorry.
Uh, S R, State Revolving Fund Loan, DG three, one, two oh six, two oh one six, one six nine meters. Uh, two hundred nineteen thousand eight hundred and fifteen, Councilman Evil.
I would like to motion to take that line item off of here, um, it, uh.
Number six.
Number six, because that was a different line item than what I discussed with Mr. Ezel, so I'd like to motion to take that off.
Okay, motion, well, just take it off, we don't have.
Okay, yeah, okay. And. Um, and that's if we go number seven.
Okay, debt payoff of State Revolving Fund Loan, uh, D W T, two thousand eighteen, one nine nine water tank, that's fifty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-nine.
Um, yes, just, um, just based on, um, Scott's, uh, recommendations on paying off some debts. Yes, just, um, just based on, um, Scott's, uh, recommendations on paying off some debts. Um, this is a smaller one, he's kind of hitting out a couple smaller ones, was his recommendation. I got to, uh, got to sit down. I really appreciate Scott, the time he spent, he spent about a half hour with me going over everything, um, where, yeah, I like to. I like to pay off more debts and save, conserve money as much as possible, but, uh, what he was kind of explaining to me was, um, was. Wrote down the term, Scott, and I can't remember what, but it's like a generational, um.
Intergenerational funding.
Intergenerational funding. And I, at a local level, keeping it under control, intergenerational funding is says, hey. We're buying a water plant, okay? But the taxpayers today, in this four years, shouldn't necessarily have to pay. For that water plant, all upfront, needs to be spread over fifty years. And that's, and, and so, we're in Washington, we're well, well beyond that, and it's been out of control, but, I mean, the situation we're in right now. We're, we're doing a lot better financially. So, um, so there was things that I, that I took off. Water meters at two one nine, that I was like, you know what, let's keep that going as intergenerational, but some of these smaller ones. Weren't a good situation to pay that off, and that was gonna help us with some future I N I, uh, you know, projects that we have coming up. For as far as grants and funding and loans, uh, et cetera. So, my recommendation was to, um. Go ahead and put this in our budget coming up. I, I don't know if we need to do this now, Scott, or if you wanna put this in the, in the budget. Which, which one would be more appropriate?
When you do it, is totally, or if you do it, it's up to the council. Uh, I have put these in the budget for next year. But there's no reason we couldn't move on this one if we wanted to do this one this year.
Okay. I have no objection to do it next year, or this year, y'all are wanting to do it, but, um, and go ahead.
I was gonna ask Scott a question. Scott, what is, what, I would like your recommendation on this. What do you recommend that us, the city do to?
Our ability to pay debt out of the water sewer fund will be limited. We'll be able to borrow about one point five million dollars. Okay, if you keep the existing debt, we won't be able to cash flow the payments, even if it's S R F lines. My concept is, let us take care of these small ones, so that when we move forward, to the mayor's vision of. All the streets and the water lines, just the water lines, I'm talking about this, we will be in a position to apply for those S R F loans. And have better financial ratios in order to apply for them.
Thank you.
Difference, just like Cole was saying, you need to keep in mind, long-term projects like water lines, streets. Buildings, those things last for multiple years. And the concept in municipal accounting is. Spread that cost over the different generations as opposed to taking it now. But we know. What we're trying to do, and what we're gonna need to do with the water lines, is to begin a program of replacing them. So, I would like to see us get into a position where, uh, we will be able to get the money borrowed for those, for a certain percentage. One point five is about all we're gonna be able to borrow. That's about it. Additional to what we have.
I don't wanna take away from you, you wanna make a motion, I'd love to second that.
I was gonna make a motion. I say it was his, I, I know what your idea, but I was gonna make a motion that we ask Scott to bring to the next budget meeting, a list of small-term debt that we can actually pay off.
So, it's all right here?
But I mean, so we can just, yeah, but we can incorporate it into, once he recommends we pay off.
Absolutely, yeah. And he goes that to us every, every month in his.
Right, but I just want his recommendations on, hey, so we should pay this, this, and this off.
So, yeah, so, and that's what this is. That one's the recommendation. The, the second one, I was gonna say, that, that's why I'm, I'm, I made a mistake on, put that two nineteen. Was that Futural Alley was about a hundred and nine K. He was gonna recommend that we pay that out of pocket.
Right, but we can.
Once it's all finished, and we get the twenty percent off of the total.
Right.
And we pay that one off, and then we get the two smallest ones.
But, but I was gonna say is, bring that, the motions to the table next, and we can buzz it in and have it all ready to go when we, we're done with it in one meeting.
I mean, I, I have no issue with that. Are you good with that? Yeah, if y'all are good with it, but.
Do you understand what the motion was?
Happy to. We had such a low interest rate in it anyways, so it's not gonna, one month is gonna hurt us.
Can I ask, what's the reasoning for putting off, paying, voting to pay it off tonight versus later?
Well, we're having a budget meeting next, and I wanted to get, see the items that he's got, and he may come up with more that we can pay off, and get it all done at one time. Instead of paying this one off now, and then next month voting on this one, have it all done at one time. That's, that's my logic behind it.
Be able to get into the budget.
Yeah, build into the budget, have it done. That's just my logic behind it. I'm open to whatever I wanna do.
If you go to the water sewer line budget, you'll see what I've recommended as far as paying off.
So, it's already in there, is that what you're saying?
It is.
It's already in there.
I would say, I think we're.
Didn't get to it tonight.
Okay.
We're blessed to have Scott be able to analyze these things and go through it and explain, instead of just.
Exactly.
You know, having a lot of things, so, like, I've, um, um, I picked it apart, I think it's a great idea.
So, the motion is to bring in a list next time. Do we have a second on that? From Scott? Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, it was motion to just get the list and get a budget and pay it off.
So, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so, we have that for next time. We have one more item.
We got two more.
Yeah, we can do these separately, if y'all would like to. I'd like to motion, I'll do them separately, no way y'all can do it. I'd like to motion that we, um, accept the application for the Drug Prevention Coalition. On, uh, the dates on here.
What are the dates against? May twenty-seventh and June seventeenth.
I'll second it.
We need more of these. These are, these are great, great for our town.
This, where are those gonna be held?
Looks like they're on the courthouse.
Courthouse.
We've discussed, maybe a possibility of doing one in the park, just to.
It's their event, it's their event, so, it's not really up to us, just except for.
We, they had talked with me.
Sir.
Yes.
Well, are they closing the street?
Okay, uh, we have a motion, do we have a second today?
Yeah, it's been seconded.
Any discussion?
The only discussion I had is, uh, I, I just, I wanna think about this going board, I'm not trying to rain on anybody's. Uh, special event. Um, but, we, we just, we closed the street down a lot. And I have personally had phone calls of people asking me about if, uh, it's nothing against them, it's nothing against any other organization. But if it was possible for them to have the events without shutting the street down. So, I just wanted to have that discussion, cause people, there are citizens that are asking.
I've had the same thing, cause they shut, like. I hate to say it, but the concert series is every other weekend, and there's, they're not happy.
Downtown businesses do not like it.
I'm getting more than the businesses, I'm not getting just the business, I'm getting more people saying, you know.
I haven't had a business owner at all, I've had just citizens.
I might go and tell y'all, I live down there, I watch kids go out there at both of these things, I watch them play, I watch them make memories. And you know what? With minor traffic inconvenience to a family-friendly place, I'm gonna go with the family-friendly in area, and that, that's just, that's how, like. There's so many ways you can drive around that, and so, we're gonna go ahead and do this, I mean, we're trying to get kids outside as it is. And I've never had.
That's what I'm wondering, we have the big park weekend, you know, why don't we have it there?
What I'm, what I'm curious about is, y'all are getting all these phone calls, I've had nothing but phone calls on the opposite side. So, what, do people just decide not to call me about it?
I, I can't tell you who calls you and who doesn't call you, I mean.
Okay, I mean, I.
If you're the one turning the permit, they're probably not gonna call you and say, hey, we don't want that, I don't know, I don't know who calls you. You know?
I have had people, uh, call me and just say, well, I just learned in summer just to go around town. They avoid downtown.
And that's not good. We don't want people to.
I mean, we want the events to happen, but I mean, I don't think shutting the roads down every other weekend is.
We need to look at one of two things.
I know one place, I'm sorry, I know two places that don't like it.
We, we need to do one of two things, I think, and this is a, one person's opinion. Um, we either need to look at not shutting the streets down for the events, or we need to look at these events taking place in a different location. If people are thinking that it's unsafe for street, for traffic to be going.
It's, it's a pedestrian area, like, like, the thing is, is like, we're. But, but no, I mean, that, yes, a street is, a street is a pedestrian area, a road is not. We have streets here, and that, that's, that's something like, to do some, a street is a pedestrian area. A street has crosswalks, a street has. Proper crosswalks, a street has sidewalks.
But it also has areas that is not pedestrian.
So, so use the crosswalks whenever you're at the event, instead of shutting the street down.
They, we're not the only town that does this. Every other town in this, in this state does it, and it's, it's just a, people. I can't tell you when I moved here, how many people were like, I can't wait to get back how it was back in the day, and you all know this, cause I hadn't lived here forever. But apparently, everything was shut, everybody was out on Saturdays, there was raffles, there was more community, there was families. There was people walking around, there were kids, and it was friendly. And nobody wants to let their kids run around down there, me included. When that's like that, I can let my little girl run around when that happens, and I, and, and I see everyone else, their families, but I, I can't do that when that's going on. My little girl don't go to the concert, my little girl don't go to this.
Man, just, the two things we're talking about, the movies, I, I did speak just quickly with the Drug Coalition. And they were open to maybe doing one of these in the park, like you suggested, which would be a great setting for it, cause it's dark. You don't have the lights downtown competing with it, and you can set up very easily generators down there if they want to do one in the park. Also, that's, that's something we might get talk to them about.
Think we need to look at, like I said, it's, it's not a, uh, I'm not bringing it up because it's how I feel, I'm bringing it up because I'm getting.
I think they should be able to have some concerts down there, I mean.
Sure.
But not, not every other weekend.
Just, we're just talking about the movie right now.
We loved it all together, didn't we?
No, no, we didn't, we did it separately. And this is, uh, they got two dates on here for theirs.
Twenty-seventh and the seventeenth.
So anyways, that, that's two dates right there, and they're Fridays, and it's family-friendly, it's getting families out, doing what families should be doing.
Nobody's against the, the events, I'm just, I, all I brought up was whether or not we need to shut down the street for the event.
Well, and again, this is.
I think it'd be a lot safer for the kids.
One of these in the park would be.
I know it'd be a lot safer.
But, you're not like what I have to say about that. It's not our, it's not our responsibility to make sure children are safe when they're at an event. It's the parent's responsibility to watch those kids. If the parents aren't watching the kids, they're turning loose, letting them run, that's on the parents, not on the.
There's that much space, Steve, between a safe place and a car running you over.
And if you're a parent, you're watching a kid, they won't run in the street.
Walked around with my, my two-year-old, five-year-old today.
I've got, I've got three children, none of them have been hit by a car yet.
I think that's nice that your kids don't, that are a hundred percent compliant and stay exactly where it, but I have real kids who actually do run away and don't listen to me sometimes.
Did you say real kids? There are kids real.
So, you're telling me my kids aren't real? No, that's exactly what you said.
All right, we're not playing politics, I'm just saying.
That is politics, and you started it.
May I interject something here, please?
Take it personally.
We do have another option of our city park, and it's.
I'm not taking it personally, I'm just going by what you said.
Excuse me, gentlemen.
We don't need to talk about other people's kids, I mean, that's not a, that's.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
I didn't say, okay, you can't do that, first, and Steve, I wasn't saying your kids, I said my kids are real kids, I didn't imply your kids, I didn't imply anyone's kids. Saying I apologize.
Let's go back to the order here, please. A-again, the, one of you said another option to. Maybe settle this whole thing, so let's just have the, the movies in the park. It's a safe place.
We, we can't, we can't tell them where to have their event.
Well, well, you can.
We, we can tell them that they can't have it here.
Yeah, we can tell them we can't have here, we can't say you have to.
Tell them, we're saying we can't have this here, but the concert can be there, that's not gonna be fair to the two events.
Maybe this would be an option for this particular thing.
I've got an idea. Why don't we have a public hearing on this matter by closing the streets?
I mean, we.
That what you.
Are, are we pro-government, are we pro-citizens, like, this is a citizen's event?
We want them to have a voice.
Voice, let them say that we can all hear at the same time.
Okay, this is. I mean, y'all are talking, that's fine. I mean, it's coming out of y'all's mouths, I'm not saying it.
What?
Is there a motion to second on this?
There is, yes.
Let's vote on it, let's.
Councilman, uh, Evil made a motion to accept the Drug Coalition's special event permits for May twenty-seventh and June seventeenth. Councilman Petty seconded.
And that would be with closing the street, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that is how it is currently wrote.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
For three.
Of having it downtown, you're saying?
We've, of the motion that we, the motion that was made.
This is for the two. To approve the permit for the Drug Coalition.
To, to have it.
You separated those, right?
There's two for.
We're closing the street down.
Doing it for the Drug Coalition right now.
So, these would be, this, everybody's on page, this would be for the July.
No, May twenty-seventh and June seventeen.
And June seventeenth, to have it downtown in the full house and just shut off the streets for this, that's what we're voting on. Okay. We had, uh, listen, one more time, all in favor? Any opposed?
Opposed.
I think I'm gonna abstain, because I'm the chairman of the Coalition, so, I think I'll abstain.
Okay, so we have.
And the only reason I'm.
I'm confused.
Okay.
Okay, we're talking about the two events, right?
We're talking about.
Without, we're, we're closing the streets down.
Let's, let's go back, we've got three things tonight, we've got, uh, two Drug Coalition movies. That they wanna have in courthouse lawn and close the.
We're voting on both of those right now.
Hold on, and then further down, we have several closures for the American Legion. So, right now, it's just closing the street for these two movie nights, which are both on a Friday, June seventeenth and May twenty-seventh. And that would be, that's what we're voting on right now, those two. Let's start all over. All in favor?
How many times we gonna vote on this?
Well, we didn't have.
I, I wanted to hear it again, because if you do for one, you gotta do for the other, that's what.
Let me, we have.
We didn't get to the other one.
Are we still, can we still discuss this? We haven't voted yet, right?
We didn't finish, Cole.
I mean, well, we did, but he didn't understand.
Okay.
Okay, we're back to the discussion part. I think that we need to open it up for citizens' concerns, let the citizens come in and tell us, if they, if they say, hey, we wanna close the streets down, we approve all the permits the same. We don't approve two of this, and I approve this one, I think we need to do it fairly across the board for everybody. So, I, I think we should open, table this till next month, and have the citizens' concerns and put, and advertise that they're speaking on closing the streets.
Then we would have to vote this down in order to do that, then.
Can I, can I, can I just point out, and I, I'm, I can't speak for the Drug Coalition, but I can speak for. All of us at the American Legion, and I'm in the American Legion, okay? There's a lot of time, there's a lot of money, there's a lot of sweat, there's a lot of tears that go into these events. They're not just half-stanceless party. These are things that help people, that help people, okay? And this is a venue that helps people, and it's a specific venue for a reason too, and I can tell you that it's probably got a specific reason for them, maybe it doesn't, I can't speak for them. With American Legion, for over eight decades, we have not had a place to call home. And we got a place to call home right across the street, and one big thing about it is we can bring people in and educate them. On what it is that we've done as combat veterans. And because we have complaints. From whoever that we've never heard of, and no one's ever come up to me about, but apparently everyone else has, that's fine. But, we have to start working on this now, otherwise, we have to cancel this now. We raised thousands of dollars for it, and you know what our money goes to? It goes to helping veterans, it goes to helping widows, it goes to helping. Our rides to go escort people who've died. It's, it's bigger than government, it's, it's, it's about honor. And this is a venue for it, and so, just think about that when you vote for this. And I'm gonna also say, the Drug Coalition, I've seen the things that they do, Barbara can tell you well more than I can, but it's making an impact on the community. And maybe they're willing to change that venue, and that's fine, and maybe the Legion's willing to change the venue too, but I can go and tell you, they probably aren't. But I can't speak for them. But.
But again, we're not, we're not asking them to, we're not asking anybody to change venues.
We just want to.
Nobody said that.
The people that want to voice their concerns about the streets being closed, have, have their voice heard, that's all we're asking.
Which is the most pro-citizen.
And they don't come and voice it, then that's their fault.
All right, well, if we're gonna do that, I would highly recommend you doing that sooner than later, because the Legion's one is on May twenty-first. You gotta book bands months out.
Uh, and this is gonna sound horrible, but maybe they shouldn't have counted chickens before they hatched, they should have waited before they did, I get you, but.
And again.
Because it's, it's, it's not normal, it's just out of context that you wouldn't. You wouldn't shut down the streets for children in a veterans' event.
Well, here's what we're thinking, if we shut down this, the street this many times, and anybody else comes up with an event, we could technically have the street shut every week.
Technically, you could.
I think it's a, it's an issue that we need to address in the future, but we've set a precedent in the past for doing this.
And, I mean, we've already lost the River City Ball, and it's just, it's becoming less friendly to have family-friendly things down there. And, I mean, I, I get it, like, it's an inconvenience to me more than anybody, cause that's where I, that's where I live in park. I'm very inconvenienced by it, but it's not about me, it's about community.
That, that's what I'm saying. It's not about just us six.
And it's, it's, it's not, but I, I also don't believe it's about majority of people, I believe it's about community, and that's what it's about, that's what I believe.
Including our businesses.
Including our businesses.
So let them come here and talk, why are we still talking about this?
I don't know. Because it's a timing thing, but if y'all wanna do it, it's fine with me, I'm just saying.
Well, you've either gotta rescind, or we've gotta vote it down, so it's one or the other.
All right, well, there's a vote, I, I'm good with voting on it.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, would you, so we're all on the same page?
Councilman Evil made a motion to accept the Drug Coalition's special events permits for May twenty-seventh and June seventeenth. Councilman Petty seconded.
And, and that's to close the street with evil, okay, all in favor? Would you do, raise your hands, please. Okay, all in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay.
And I abstain.
And I'm in extension, okay. Do I have any further?
I'd like to make a motion that we put these two back on. You wanna do all of them at one time?
Well, just, let me, let me make this motion on this one, and then if you need to make a motion.
Well, I'm gonna put them all three out next month, so the citizens will talk and vote on them again.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna go and make this motion, cause I made a commitment, and I gave my word, I'm making a motion on this, so. Motion for, um, a lot less dates too, because we were thinking about things like that, so it's not twelve concert series, it's eight. And there's gonna be a whole month in between one of them. We've got some memorial stuff for Fred Keith going on, we got a lot of things going on for some things that are pretty sentimental. But, uh, the dates are May twenty-first, June fourth, June eighteenth. Sorry.
May twenty-first.
May twenty-first, June fourth. June eighteenth. July sixteenth. July thirtieth. August thirteenth. August twenty-seventh. And September tenth. And be between five thirty and nine thirty, and they're on Saturdays, they're on Saturdays.
What time does the concert start?
Concert starts at six and ends at nine, and the reason is, is there's families of kids that come and go, and sometimes they set it up right then, and, and then it's like, you know, we've had, we've had several accidents, so. That's why they put the thirty-minute buffer in between this time.
Amendment is sent.
Yeah, so that's my motion that we accept that.
I'll second.
So the motion is to accept all of these, to approve all of these dates for the concerts?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, can you have a second, any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Okay, there you go, it's been passed, yes sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we put these back on the agenda for next month, and we open it up to citizens' concerns, and then we can redo it and be done, settled next month.
Second.
That'll give you time for the, the May if it goes through.
Okay, we have a motion, second, to put these on the agenda for next week and, or next month, invite the citizens to come and comment, yes sir.
May I add to that, that we do it at the early, the early part of the meeting?
We can't vote then.
The citizens' concern.
Yeah, we do at the beginning of the meeting, I agree, yeah. Do it, that'll be their time to speak from whatever we decide.
And that usually is at the beginning of the meeting, citizens' concerns.
I agree.
Okay, the amendment is to make it during citizens' concern, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed, so the motion as amended?
Carries, yeah.
All in favor?
Where he voted.
I voted.
Well, not with the amendment on it.
Yes.
No, you just put it on the amendment, so we add the amendment to the main.
I'll make the motion.
Well, no, then, again, you.
Yes, so he made, I made the motion, he made an amendment, we voted on the amendment, now we need to vote on the original motion.
Alright, so the original motion, first amendment, all in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed, yes sir?
No, I'm not opposed, I'm just waiting.
Okay, go ahead.
Like, uh, to make a motion to add an agenda item to new business. Second.
Well, we, what is it?
Like to hear from Scott about what's going on and why he feels the way that he does, so I'd like to hear that.
Okay.
Alright.
You second it?
If he's willing.
If he's really.
If he wants to speak, I would like him to speak on it.
Who seconded that, I'm sorry, thank you.
So we have a motion to add to a new business, uh, do we have a second, who seconded, okay, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Ah.
Okay. Scott, can you help us with that?
Do we need to go into executive session?
He wouldn't be allowed.
That's true.
Our mayor outworks most anybody I know, okay? She and I butt heads like two old bulls. And I accept responsibility for mistakes, but I'll always look people in the eye and tell them that I've done so. And I will fix them. Today, Representative from the state stopped by the office because they'd had a call, and there was an implication, at least they interpreted an implication, uh, that I'd had some role in trying to mislead the council with the budgeting and so forth. That is not true. And that bothers me. There has been an implication that maybe I have a problem working for females. And I do not. What I do have a problem with is micromanagement when you hired me to do a job, and I would like to do a job for the mayor, and I find it difficult to do so. About the town of Carthage, I pastor are wonderful people. And. Last thing I wanna do is create problems for any of us, for the town, whatever. But I do think it's time to think about this matter. And what the best way to proceed with it is, I'm not certain quite just yet. I would just like to be able to do my job for the town. And. Escape some of the drama that seems to come this way. I think nobody else works as closely with the mayor, with the exception of this bang. And we are different, and the mayor has some wonderful ideas at times, and she helps a great deal, okay? But on a daily basis, I feel as if I'm in the sixth grade and, and, uh, haven't been doing this for a little while, and I'm not saying I never make a mistake, I will make a mistake, I make mistakes, but I admit them and we move on with them. And the, as a accounting professional and as a minister, if you have just the accusations placed against your integrity, uh, you're done.
Absolutely.
And, um. To bring. Someone in or to make statements to persons who may not be getting all of it, my heart was a pest, uh, that concerns me. And I will go on record and say, uh, I am more than willing to invite any comptroller, audit, anything that's there, uh, and, uh. I'll just look in and tell you that. But I'm telling to you that the mayor works hard, she tries to do the best for the city, you don't have anybody else who works as hard as the mayor does, trying to take care of the financial matters in terms of getting money for the city and so forth. We just. Part of us, and Paul, had a problem communicating, and I have a very difficult time communicating. And, uh. All this would not be said unless this event had occurred today, it concerns me when we, I mean, it's, it just concerns an entire part of it.
Can you tell us who came in today and what they came in?
We have questions.
Hold on a minute, hold on a minute, Mayor.
Cause I, I do have a question, I think maybe there's confusion because the gentleman you're talking about, I didn't even know was coming, he was coming to visit South Carthage, and I've never once said to him anything about your integrity, I wanna make, be clear about that, I think I have the highest respect for you. Uh, yes, we do butt heads because we were both pretty opinionated, but this gentleman, I had no idea, I was in a meeting when he showed up today, he just dropped by to, I don't know why he dropped by.
Mayor, can we ask him questions, please?
Sure, but I, I wouldn't.
I understand, but we just wanna ask questions, we, we wanna clarify.
Business, I want him to know that I've never said anything to this gentleman about his integrity whatsoever.
You got a councilman has a question.
Yes sir.
Guys, we don't have to do, my grandmother said, don't air your dirty laundry and put it out for everybody. I wish we had the opportunity to do executive session where this kind of thing should be discussed.
The only question I have is, who came in and from what department were they from, from the state?
I did not meet with them.
Do we, did we get a name?
Question for the mayor.
Mayor, who came in?
They met with.
I had no idea, I was in a meeting, that's what I'm saying.
Mr. Gary Jacob.
He came in to speak too?
He stopped by and asked to speak to the mayor or myself, mayor was in a meeting, so Julie asked me to come and speak with him.
And did he tell you what it was about?
He did not, but he did at one point ask me how things were going and ask me, um, if I knew who was to present the budget, whether that was in our charter, whether it was CMFO position in the mayor, I said I did not know if our charter stated that, I'd be glad to look it up. He saw the budget that was sitting where I had it, he asked if he could look at it, he said that the mayor had some concerns with how Scott was gonna present the budget.
Well, of course.
So he was basically hearing her request.
Exactly.
Now, he did, now, I will say, he did tell me I was in the area because I was in South Carthage.
But she had some concerns.
And let me express what that was, we, early on, we talked about COLA, and as I mentioned earlier, there had been indications in the budget of, let's go ahead and put the COLA in, and I said, no. Really, we need to let the council decide on that, whether they want to do COLA at all, or what percentage do they wanna put in, and that was the question I addressed to him, is, is there any particular way to address that in our budget? Do we need to go ahead and put it in, do we, so that was really.
That's what he did with everything else that was proposed, if you just put it in.
That's his job, he's the finance guy.
Well.
We shouldn't have any question about it.
Usually, your council votes on if you wanna.
We can vote on the budgets whole, but he's the one that knows the numbers.
Yeah, he's just presenting it.
You're totally out of line by calling them on this.
But he did, Scott did adjust it, as Ricky and I were talking about earlier, and I appreciate that, he's put in there now what would two percent be, what would four percent be, what would six percent be, and that's all I was originally asking when we.
But you forced it, you forced it by calling somebody, you didn't just ask him and he said, okay.
No, because there was no mention, I mean, he just stopped by today, I had no idea he was even.
All I know is we can't afford to lose another, another CMFO.
No.
We can't afford to lose another.
Especially one that's great.
Uh, no, I certainly don't.
And Mayor Smith?
I fought for him, and if you look at the budget, I've even said, let's increase his salary to sixty or sixty-five thousand.
With all respect, the last, the last one left saying the exact same thing.
Was that he's saying now.
That he's saying right now.
They were micromanaged and could not do their job without daily being micromanaged, and I've heard that from every employee.
Yeah, it's not just one.
If you don't mind, I, I don't want it to be an attack the mayor maker, you know, all this stuff, that's not my goal, my, my goal is if somebody's telling you that, and. You, you just should hear that and, and adjust, and say, maybe that's not the effective way, the most effective way to communicate, if somebody feels like they're a sixth grader and they're a grown adult, so maybe just.
Thirty years experience.
Yeah, without, without arguing and, and, and combating it and trying to justify, just say, maybe they're right, maybe I need to adjust how I, how I interact with the employees.
Well, and I thought that we did with, with the final conversation we had about this, I said, just, just present what you want, Scott, and he came back today and said, with this work, man, and I said, that's wonderful. You, you built in how much would two percent, how much would four percent, how much would six percent?
The problem is, you're contacting somebody outside of our organization.
Exactly, and question.
There's no reason to justify it.
And I think Cole should have the focus, he's been asking for it for some time.
Let him finish, please, let him finish.
We're adults.
Yeah.
Okay, um, whether I can. Continue to work with the mayor, I've gotta pray, think about that and pray about it and, and so forth. I don't wanna be written more, we don't need that, the people elected the mayor, okay, she's the mayor, and she should be able to, to proceed in the manner in which she sees fit to do so. And I respect her for that, and I respect her for trying to do great things for the town of Carthage, I really do, okay? And I will admit to you, sometimes I'm bullheaded, uh, uh, that happens to me. What do you do with interpersonal relationships? If someone you feel has fault against you, you ask for forgiveness, and then, uh, that's all you can do, so mayor, I publicly ask you for your forgiveness, I made a mistake on the over-budgeting of the police department. The worksheet I had yesterday or the day before, uh, had an error in it, but the same concept was true, we still over-budgeted, uh, I had no intent to mislead you or just do anything with the council in one way or the other, so I ask your forgiveness.
And likewise, I apologize for anything I've done to offend you, I apologize, and I, I want you to know, and I would ask your forgiveness because I have the highest respect for you, I always have, and I hope we can just sit down and work out a better way for me to communicate with you, and I, I think.
Then we done, what we can do is ask for forgiveness, and then, uh, and then all of us have to make our own decisions, how we go about things.
Cole. What I say is completely respectfully, cause especially here from him, cause I know y'all butt heads, and him, he gave you a lot of high praises up there, he did. Scott's, Scott's a numbers guy, and he operates that way, and, um, you know, when you work with numbers, you gotta have that, you gotta have that space, you gotta have, you gotta have some breathing room. And I, I would just ask you personally, and I, and I think, I think the council would be just like, maybe just, you know, like, it's, it's good to get some information from them, maybe back off on some of the, the management of them, cause we, we trust Scott, and, and, and I was, I was the no vote on Scott. If you remember, I voted against hiring Scott, um, I've come to really appreciate Scott, Scott has proved me a hundred percent wrong, Scott has gone out there, I mean, I'm sitting here watching this budget, and it's exactly what I always wanted to do, like, three years ago, he's been bringing big things down more to reality, and I appreciate that. And so if I've got a, if I've got an issue when it comes to the budget, he's who we hire, and that's who I go to, and if I have other issues that are kinda more city-related, I, I'll go to you, or if it's, um, you know, and there's just different, different lanes, and, and that's what, I, I would just ask you to just remember that's his lane, and, and, and it doesn't mean you don't get involved at all, but. The level involvement, I think we're all seeing, especially past CMFOs, is just maybe back off on it a little bit, and I mean that with respect. Um, and I think that that would go a long way for him and, and maintaining him especially, and I, and I think that was excellent, that y'all just did that right there, that just made me feel better, just that y'all, you know, like, we're adults.
Burning the hedges.
I do, I do think the world of Scott, and, and, and I.
Terrible loser.
And I think we need to be, we need to pay him more than we're paying him, I, I've said that all along.
Well, sometimes it's just not even pay, um, like, money's a tool, but sometimes someone just saying, thank you, or just saying something nice once, once a week, just like, hey, that, he did a really good job on that, that, that goes way more than a thousand dollars or whatever.
No, and, and, I, I.
That's awesome.
Go ahead.
What I'm hearing is there are, are day-to-day things, and, and he's still here, so I don't, what I'm hearing is what was huge was to call someone in to check his integrity, I would be so devastated.
And don't say it didn't happen, cause he didn't, he needed to walk in and talk about it, so just quit lying.
Excuse me. No, don't do that, please don't do that, I'm trying my best to explain. We have, this gentleman who came today, I had no idea he was in town, I was in the middle of a meeting, uh, he came in because he had a meeting in South Carthage, he stopped by, he's one of our advisors on M task, he stopped by to say hello.
But he asked to look at the budget.
Yes.
You, you attend, you would talk to him, I mean, honestly.
I, just what I said, COLA, I was concerned because there is.
That's what his issue is with. And I think what, what.
But he did, he did, we did communicate, and he did change it on this, if you look at what it is now, he put two percent, that was all it was about.
Mayor, I think what would go a real long way.
At the expense of losing him though, yeah.
Well, no, I don't wanna lose Scott, and if I have to grovel, I will, we're not gonna lose him.
With, with all respect, I think what would go a real long ways is if you apologize to him about it, and then maybe call M task and apologize to them about it, and I think, and that would gain a lot of respect from us too, if you did that, and.
And, and work in-house on problems, and, and if there's a problem, bring it to the council.
Bring it to us, cause I mean, that's what we hired him for, he's a numbers guy.
Yeah.
Well. Okay, I, I accept what you're saying, and I would work harder to work.
Alright, did you have one more you wanna add?
Yeah, I've got two more to add, and y'all can tell me to, y'all can vote for it or not, these are two things that came to me, um, like, one was emailed to me right after the, uh, right after the agenda went out, um, it has to do with the, um, Legion Hall downspout. Um, they just asked me to address at the council meeting, y'all can add it next month or not, cause I wasn't on time, so if y'all wanna.
I mean, we're here, we've been here as long as we might.
Okay, alright, so, um.
Make the motion out of it.
Yes, um, motion to add the, um, downspout, it had to do with the, uh, um, the street issue.
Second.
We need Derek to speak to that.
What?
If he's still here.
Okay. So that's fine, um.
You have a second?
Yes.
Yeah.
We need a vote.
Uh-huh.
Okay, let's vote to add it.
Okay, so it's the, the issue of a downspout?
The issue of the downspout.
At the Legion.
At the Legion.
We need to vote to.
Some motion to add it?
The motion to add it, yes.
Say, aren't they adding it? Oh. Any of us? Okay, alright.
Um, I'll read this email real quick, and y'all, whatever y'all wanna do, um. Hello, Cole, story goes, Mayor Smith and her public work supervisor, Les Fisher, approached me back in November twenty-twenty-one about opening up the exterior Veterans Hall downspout to run a test to see if water was going into the next-door lawyer's basement, if y'all remember. about opening up the exterior Veterans Hall Downspout to run a test to see if water was going into the next door lawyer's basement, if y'all remember that issue that was going on. I agreed since Mayor Smith assured me that they, Carthage Public Works, would put it all back together like it was originally, similar to image two zero zero six. That's this image right here, um, there's year two zero seven attached. Shortly after the test, Carthage Public Works installed a PVC piping attached to the piping to the telephone pole as a, um, as a permanent fix. I reminded Mayor Smith that she said she would have, um, that she would put it back like it was. After some point in the discussion, Mayor Smith, Les Fisher and I agreed that the city of Carthage would install a Downspout with a trough and a cover grate in the sidewalk. To date, no action has been taken by the city of Carthage. Please bring this up at the next city council meeting to get the money appropriated, approved to set to date when the Veterans Hall Downspout and trough will be installed in the city of Carthage. Um, John McCartney is a witness to the events that occurred on January twenty, twenty-two, um, uh, occurred January twenty twenty-two. Side note, I have a call complaint into Upper Cumberland Electric about the PVC piping attached to their pole, let them know that the city of Carthage was responsible. Rule of thumb, nothing is attached to telephone utility poles that present a safety hazard unless approved by the utility. Thank you in advance, with your time and consideration, if there are any further questions, then please feel free to contact me. Bruce Wentworth, Smith County, um, Veteran Service Officer, Air Captain, Post fifty-seven, Service Officer. So apparently just something needs to be done to fix that, if y'all can just honor that.
Derek, would you say that?
Yeah, and we'll, we'll honor that.
Okay.
We did tell them we would fix it.
Okay.
It was a temporary solution, uh, because we was getting water into Miss Underwood's, uh, Miss, the attorney's.
Miss Moore's.
Robin Moore, yeah.
Uh, we do have a plan in place to fix that, we're gonna saw cut the sidewalk, put it back on the sidewalk, and just wait on weather permit.
Okay, just wait, so timelines, weather permitting?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just let them know that, let's take care of that.
Cold and snowing and raining, uh, we should be able to pour something on that.
Okay, good deal, and I just had one more to add, and y'all can vote it up or down, this one was asked of me tonight to address, um, I guess, signs being taken down, political signs slash, um, business signs are being-
Second added to the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, and it's on, okay, all in favor of adding it to the agenda?
Aye. Removal political signs and personal signs on-
Yeah, so, um, and then, um, so I guess apparently there's a letter going out, people are, they're being taken down, and side orders-
There was something posted in the newspaper, actually.
Okay, so it was posted in the-
Because we have had complaints out the kazoo from citizens all over town, because if you remember out at intersection at McDonald's, everything out there was covered with signs, that's a public right of way, public property there, and then down by Wal-Mart, so we've had complaints for two years now. And we just finally, somebody just really arately said, why are, we're trying to make the rest of the town beautiful, there's a, actually a law that says you can't put anything but a public sign in a public right of way, and that's what we did, and they took them out of the public right of ways. And we told, we called, they were supposed to call everybody and let them know they're stacked down here.
Well, they, they've been putting political signs up there for hundreds of years.
Well, I understand, well, I understand, but it is a public right of way, and I believe the former mayor also pulled them up, is what I'm told by citizens, so.
Well, do we need to create then, if, if we wanna be able to allow that?
There's a sign order, we have to do, uh, amend it to the sign order, to allow-
It's also a state thing, it's just like the T-DOT, you can't put anything in their public right of way. You can put public signs, like if it's a traffic sign, a turning sign, a hospital sign, but no other-
So-
Thing, they can put it in a private yard, there's no problem with that.
Let me give, I'll give you all a recommendation, we can, we can address this next council meeting, is maybe invite Dr. Duke, he's like the sign expert.
I think he's the one that wrote the ordinance.
Yeah, he's, he, he knows it.
My dad.
So, uh, so yeah, I'd like to motion that we put this on the agenda, um, could you contact Dr. Duke?
Sure, we'd like to, just, footnote, every city has this ordinance, you can't put anything in a public-
Yeah, that's fine, that, that what we all discuss and address it, so it's something that-
Maybe we can make an exception for a political, something.
And then I think there's one, like Sam's got signs that he's had for years, um, out there too. Um, I know because I one time put a political sign in front of it, he called me.
As your territory, what?
He was like, oh, it's my territory, get out of here.
Hey, finish your motion.
Yeah, but, oh, sorry, um, but then we add that to the agenda and the city contacts Dr. Duke and invites-
Second.
Alright, second, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, thank you.
Put it to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Aye, aye.
Hey Steve, I hope you know I didn't-
No.